Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting of the Buncombe County Board of Education to attention. I'd get a message to approve the agenda, please? A motion. And a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Um, Chair, before we go into our next question, can I just make a quick statement?
Sure.
Thank you. I'm going to take my mask off so I can... You heard clearly. I don't normally read my statements, but I want to make sure that I'm clear this time. So I've given it some thought ahead of time. And I would like to clarify a statement I made at our September 16th meeting. In that meeting, I stated that I was disappointed that we were not given a proposal to consider high schools separately from K-8 schools since they are, and I said, different animals. There's been a lot of misunderstanding of what I meant by that. A better choice of words perhaps would have been that high school is a whole different ballgame from elementary and middle school. I was not intending to refer to the people inside the schools as animals, but rather to emphasize that high schools themselves, with multiple independent class changes, operate differently from elementary and middle schools, whereas it is easier to keep students in their class groups. To be perfectly clear, I do not believe that students of any age are animals, and I wouldn't be here if I did. Thank you.
Thank you. It is now time for public comment, and I believe our staff is working on that, making that happen.
Yes, ma'am. They are corralling people. We have 39 public comments for this evening. When they have successfully been brought to this part of the building, we will see them lined up outside. At a time, I will call them in for you. All right?
Thank you.
I think we are still going to need another moment until they appear.
And so they will come over, they're going to speak right there.
Yes, ma'am. This microphone right here, and then they have the timer that they can see on the edge of the desk, and I can control that from here.
All right. Thank you.
I'll let them know that you're ready for them.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Please, please wait.
And then Mr. Rickert there to tell us their names and...
Um, I'm going to ask them that. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, okay. Let's bring in our first public comment, please. And as you begin, please say your name and where you're from.
Yes, sir. Hello. My name is Sari Parker. I am a junior at Irwin High School, and I am here today to show my concern on the Plan A format for the rest of the semester for high school in students in Buncombe County schools. With this decision that was made by the Buncombe County Board, I do not think that it provides an adequate or fair education for us high school students. We deserve the option to be able to come back to school with the A-Day, B-Day plan, with students wearing masks, staying six feet afar, and even staying in the same classroom for each day they attend. The five counties that surround us have a true Plan B option that gives families the option to be able to have real face-to-face learning for high school students: Mattes, Madison, Henderson, Yancey, McDowell, and Haywood County. We can drive an hour away and attend a football game, but here, we're still considering if we can even attend school. I am an athlete, but our education is way more important to us than sports. Sadly, we are so far behind other states and counties that people like myself have to beg to have a somewhat real education. Students are struggling with this very shortened class time. We are getting only a third to a half of instruction time compared to if we were in school. In one of my classes, 27 out of 41 of the students are failing one or more classes. A teacher from another school in Buncombe County said that their classes have a large percentage of students that are failing or crucially falling behind. This anonymous teacher feels like the students are turning in work for the grade and not for the learning of the material. Another anonymous teacher said that 50% of students they are teaching are failing as of right now. These are a few of many situations. We need to start looking at the facts, the numbers, and not just opinions based on whether we should be in school or not. On September 30th, Governor Roy Cooper announced that North Carolina is going to enter Phase Three of the North Carolina reopening plan. Things that come with this include: Large outdoor venues with seating greater than 10,000 may operate with 7% occupancy for spectators. Smaller outdoor entertainment venues may operate outdoors at 30% of capacity. Movie theaters and conference centers may open indoor spaces to 30% capacity. Outdoor amusement parks may open at 30% capacity as well. This means that we can go to Regal and Biltmore Park and watch a movie, but we can't go to school. We can go to concerts at large venues, but we can't go to school. We can go to carousers and ride roller coasters, but we still can't go to school. On September 17th, Governor Roy Cooper announced that the K-5 has the option to fully attend school with COVID-19 safety precautions. Elementary kids need in-school attention as well, but these kids are not as disciplined as high school students. We have been in school for a much longer amount of time than they have. These students don't understand what is going on like we do. They will show crayons, paper, and even food. They'll forget to leave the mask on and stay socially distanced during recess or lunch, and North Carolina requires 20 to 30 minutes of physical activity. In conclusion, I am very saddened that the Board has had six months to come up with an efficient and effective plan, but we are at the same point that we are in March. Hopefully, you all can understand and reevaluate the situation we are in with our education. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call our next public comment. If you'd please come in. You'll have three minutes, and as you begin, please say your name and where you're from. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, I am Kayla Guthrie, and I am a senior at INCA High School. I am right, I'm speaking to you today about your guys' decision about not letting high schoolers return back to school. This is very unfair to all high schoolers in Buncombe County, and you guys are taking away the best years of our lives. Many people are in my situation where this is their last year in high school, and they're about to go into college. I'm speaking for all seniors, and that they want to say is that they're very disappointed and outrageous because our final and great year is being destroyed. Senior year is very important to us, and you guys are taking away our best year. On the other hand, high schoolers should have every opportunity and right to go back to school, just like any other student. We were promised to return to school on September 28th by Governor Roy Cooper. With you declining our return to school just because a few teachers don't want to do face-to-face learning, it doesn't make it right for us high schoolers to suffer. Think about this: There are states in the U.S. that were hit worse with COVID, such as Florida, and they're going back to school full-time. So there should be no reason why we can't go back to full-time as well. High schoolers should be more qualified to go back to school because we're more mature and responsible when it comes to social distancing and wearing a mask. Another reason why we should return back to school is that about a quarter of the high school population has chosen to do virtual online for the first semester. Damn it, I lost my... There should be no reason why we have to do Plan A or Plan B rotation. So if you really care about high schoolers such as myself, then you should allow us to return to school full-time without restrictions. However, if restrictions are needed, the only restriction should have is checking our temperature. There have been many times when younger kids were at school with a fever, and we all know having a fever can spread sicknesses more quickly. I believe you guys are just letting us have our say, and you will throw it away like it was nothing or even meaningful. But I'm asking you to think about what I have to say and what others have to say. This is very upsetting and disappointing to all high schoolers, especially to seniors. After all, if gyms and bars can open, so can high schoolers. So I hope you have the heart to send us back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm in, my name is Jackson Clayton, and I live in North Carolina.
No, you go to Canler.
I go to Canler.
You have a dual language?
And I'm in dual language. And I can't learn Spanish from my mommy, so I think I need to go back.
Why? Because your mommy doesn't know Spanish?
Yeah.
So?
Because my mommy don't know how to speak Spanish.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Clayton, and this is my son, Jackson Clayton. And like he said, he's in the dual-language class at Canler Elementary School. And we feel like he needs to go to school more than two days a week because they're going 10 hours, and he cannot learn the Spanish that he needs to be in this program in 10 hours. And during virtual, he's just like looking around, so he's not, and I don't know if he's doing it right or if he's saying stuff right. So I feel like he needs to go to school more than two days a week. And so we're, thank you all for giving us this opportunity, and hopefully, we can get him back into school. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call our next public comment, please. You'll have three minutes. Please start by stating your name and where you're from.
Good evening, Buncombe County Board. My name is Lauren Carver, and I'm a senior at INCA High School. Today, I'm here to present a few facts to you, which is what Buncombe County Board of Education bases their decisions on. I would first like to begin by stating that yesterday, I spoke on behalf of the INCA District in regards to returning to school. I raised the point about seniors losing things like prom and senior parties. A board member called me back to the stand and addressed that if they thought that we went back to school, these things would not be attainable in the next calendar year. That raised the question to me as if my future has already been decided by this Board, and that what I have to say is not being considered to its full extent. There seem to be a split feelings between the students and school districts of this matter. I would like to address the fact that these few students that would like to remain virtual have that option. Plan C has always been an option and will continue to be an option for those who are more vulnerable to COVID-19, or those that have families that are not willing to take the small risk of sending their child into a classroom. Other people like myself who are healthy and that do not have any immune issues are not given the option of obtaining the education that I am ever so entitled to having. I would now like to address some data from the CDC. People 18 and under have made up only a mere 7% of COVID cases in the county and in the country, and have only contributed to less than 1/10th of percent of the deaths. I asked the Board, why are we responding in such an intense manner to COVID when the flu numbers are much greater for my age group? The next thing I would like to address is the effect of Plan B and beyond that is having on my school. As of right now, approximately 44% of the students in INCA have at least one failing grade. If we look at this percentage, how can you look in the face of these parents and tell them that you are doing the best that you can for their children? How can you look in the faces of your students and say that you are doing the best that you can? According to Governor Cooper, we will be entering Phase Three at 5:00 p.m. tomorrow. Over the past few weeks, all of our surrounding counties have been implementing plans to allow students back into schools. Buncombe County is the only one who has not provided this option for their students. From a student's standpoint, this makes it seem like the efforts within the majority of this Board are seriously lacking, and that my education is not being thought of as important. As a result of this lack of concern for my education, I have almost been forced to find better opportunities of completing my education elsewhere. These options include moving out of the county or completely out of state. I know many of my peers are also considering these options. As a student of Buncombe County Schools, I know you pride yourselves in providing the best education for your students, but I am here to tell you firsthand that we are not holding true to our motto. At this point, students are struggling and need to be back in school. I ask you, if you base your decisions on facts presented, how can you justify that virtual school is still the best option? So I leave you with a final question. Do you think that you are still providing the best education possible for your high school students? Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call our next public comment. Thank you. As you approach, please say your name and where you're from.
My name is Grayson Hibs, and I'm a senior at INCA High School. I'm here to ask that you reconsider your Board decision to keep high schools virtual throughout the end of the semester and open them up for face-to-face as soon as possible. I know from my experience in high school that it is crucial to be a part of something and have a sense of belonging in a group of people with shared interests. My interest happened to be in sports and health occupations. These are the things I look forward to doing at school. In reality, it's these activities that drive me to be a better student, not the other way around. It is these activities connections that I'm missing on right now, and thus, my motivation and drive for academics is diminishing. I appreciate the fact that some board members have mentioned bringing us in for special activities and clubs to help with our social and emotional well-being, but why not just bring us back to school? I know for a fact that I'm not alone in how I feel, and the fact that this is my senior year makes it so much harder to swallow, not only for me, but for so many others. I keep hearing you speak about the engagement in Zoom classes being so much better, but you're comparing it to the end of last year when grades were really not being affected by our participation. However, engagement is not happening, if you mean actually paying attention and participating in Zoom classes. Students are not speaking up, and we are not collaborating. The teacher is doing a lot of lecturing, and we're just taking notes. When I was finishing eighth grade, I had to make a choice about the pathway I was going to choose in high school in order to meet the graduation requirements. I chose health occupations because I plan to pursue a career in nursing. My final class to complete this pathway has been put off to next semester, my last semester. And I'm very concerned about how I can fulfill the requirements of this clinical class and be able to graduate with my CNA so that I can be more competitive in my college applications, as well as getting accepted into the nursing program. While I understand that we cannot go to nursing facilities, I do know that there are hands-on components that need to be done in the classroom. I know that there are so many other students in the same particular of not getting their graduation requirements met if we do not return to in-person learning. In a democratic society, the majority should rule in a vote. I know for a fact that over 60% of parents surveyed want their students K-12 to return to face-to-face instruction. What we don't know is what the students actually want, because until yesterday's work session, you haven't bothered to ask us. It appears that the Board and our high school administrators think that the high school students are mature enough to stay at home alone every day, manage our own work schedules and workloads, feed ourselves, and even take care of younger siblings, but yet, we're not mature enough to give our opinion. Members of the Board, I beg you to ask our opinions instead of just making decisions for us. Please allow the students who choose face-to-face to return as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's bring our next person in, please, for public comment. Please start by saying your name and where you're from.
Hi, my name is Erin Hawkins, and I go to INCA High School. I'm in the top third of my class. I'm a full-year athlete, and I play in the marching band. Currently, I'm not doing so hot and online classes. I prefer to be in-person because I learn better like that, and my grades represented that. I was a straight A and B student, and now I'm failing two of my classes. I understand that you're considering the health and safety of students and staff, but the students who are immunocompromised and/or at high risk have the opportunity to be online or change to online. I and several other students have had several ideas as to how to go back to school safely and get a solid education. The athletes that have been going back to work out and grow better have been able to sign a waiver that says if they get COVID-19, it's not the school or faculty's fault. If the athletes are signing it, why can't the students sign that? I understand that the teachers have gotten into a rhythm of signing onto the Zoom and getting everyone on there, but you guys mentioned that the teachers are seeing everybody's faces, but I'm not. At least 2/3 of the faces are not even being shown. I don't understand it. I don't even show my face. I work at Ingalls. I was working close to 40 hours a week, and I would come into contact with almost 300 people a day. I myself have not gotten sick yet. I don't know anyone else who has gotten sick at my Ingalls. I find it strange that I will come into contact with less people at a school than I will at work when they touch the same objects I'm touching and putting it into a bag. Something else to consider is that school can be a safe place for students. Some students get abused at home, and they don't have a home at all. So school is a safe place for them to be able to stay. There's only one way you can guarantee the safety of students, and that is to let them go back to school. Some of them don't care if they're failing online. They are struggling to maintain their social life, their family life, just like me. My family life is being torn apart right now, and I understand that you guys get that. But if I continue to do this, I'm scared for my family's relationship. I honestly am. And I don't know if you guys have teenagers, but we're y'all's future, and if you want people that have failed their classes to be in your future, I wish you the best of luck with that. Thank you for your guys' time, and I hope you guys have a great rest of your evening.
All right, we're ready for our next speaker. Please start with your name and where you're from.
Hi, my name is Emily Eldridge, and I am a senior at INCA High School. I just wanted to start out by saying that I do understand how extremely hard it is to come up with a plan that meets everybody's needs, and I am by no means saying that this is an easy task. I also just wanted to express my gratitude for all board members, but especially my own representative, Representative Queen, and Representatives Churchill and Bryant for really fighting to get us back to school in the last board meeting. In the special call board meeting that I watched, I was probably most disappointed by the seeming inability to handle some of the logistical issues surrounding hybrid plan for high school students. I do believe that we could implement this, even though it would be challenging, and I believe this based off of the fact that principals, such as my own Mr. Burleson, have come up with plans that they do feel like they could execute safely and properly. Beyond that, we did have two onboarding hybrid weeks in which I personally felt very safe. I didn't feel exposed. So if we could do it, then I'm a little confused as to why we aren't able to pull that off now. Beyond that, I've always seen Buncombe County Schools as kind of the leader in education for Western North Carolina, but all of the surrounding counties have been able to pull this off for their high school students, and we haven't. So like they said before, Henderson County, Haywood County, Madison County, they have all figured this out for their high school students. So I'm not exactly sure why we can't pull the same service off for our students. Another thing that I was concerned about after watching the last board meeting was kind of the inability to answer the question that Representative Bryant posed, which was, what exactly are we looking for in able to send our high school students back into class? As it stands right now, based off of the information from the North Carolina Department of Public Health, the percent positive cases in Buncombe County are around 1% to 3%. So I personally would feel safe going into a classroom with social distancing measures with that low of a percentage. And if it's at 1% to 3% right now, if we're waiting until COVID's completely gone, I mean, none of us really know when that's going to be. And beyond that, like people before me have said, we're moving to Phase Three of reopening in Buncombe, sorry, in the state of North Carolina. So I'm just frustrated that I can now go to a movie theater with my friends, and people can go to a bar, but for whatever reason, I'm unable to receive even just two days of public instruction face-to-face. So I am struggling. I know many other students that are struggling. You gave us a choice at the beginning of the semester to make the choice of what we thought was best for our family, and we made that choice. And so I do believe that you should honor that decision that you made, and I think that if we do all work together, we can most definitely deliver a plan that will be not only safe but effective for our students. Thank you.
We're ready for our next public comment. Please start with your name and where you're from.
Hi, I'm Kristin Martin. I'm from INCA High School. I'd just like to talk about how dissatisfied I am with the current state of school going on right now. I think that at the beginning of the school year, when you gave parents an option about whether or not they wanted to be virtual or hybrid, that you should be honoring all of those options equally. The people that wanted the virtual option get that option, and if they want to switch to virtual, they can still do that. But the people that wanted the hybrid option have had their options completely taken away. They don't have a choice. And that was an option that was given to parents. It wasn't even directly to the students. And I know that a lot of students just don't feel like they're learning anything from virtual. It's Zooms. You can't retain any of the information. Like, you can sit and listen to the teacher talk and take notes and pay as much attention as you would be paying attention in class, but you still just can't remember everything the same way that you can when you're in person. Not to mention that, like, in science classes, how are you going to do labs? Or just like a lot of simulations that you do in class, you just don't get the same depth of learning, no matter how hard the teachers try. And the teachers are really trying to, you know, teach the same way that they would and get the same depth across, but it's just not something that you can do virtually. And with all the other counties that are able to go back and, you know, have their plans, I think that Buncombe County should be able to work out a way to give high schoolers the education that they deserve and not just kind of push us to the side and not give us what we need, especially being a senior, trying to apply to colleges, even with counselors trying, you know, like setting up Zooms and trying to get in touch with us. It's so much harder to, you know, like coordinate everything and get it all together so that we can successfully move on to the next part of our lives. Thank you.
Thanks. Let's bring our next speaker in, please. Please start with your name and where you're from.
Hey, the first thing I'd like to say is to Mr. Queen. Thank you so much for representing our district so well in this return-to-learn matter. And to Mr. Baldwin, Dr. Baldwin, thank you for responding to my emails because Max was the only board member to respond to my many emails, and I appreciate that. I know you all work very hard on this Board, and I know you've had some long meetings because I have watched them on YouTube along with many others. And I've watched every minute because the decisions you make impact my family. My name's Jane Cannon. I have five children in Buncombe County Schools. My oldest is in high school at INCA. I have an eighth grader, twins at INCA Intermediate, and my youngest is at Hominy Valley Elementary School. Believe me, the decisions you make are going to impact my family. Here's how I see this: It's as safe as it's ever going to be to return to school before a vaccine. This virus isn't going anywhere. The health panel yesterday told you that you're doing everything you can to prevent the spread of COVID-19. Everyone keeps saying that these precautions work, and you've given an option to families to choose remote only, if that's what's best for their family. But yet, 61% of us have chosen face-to-face learning, and even the health officials plan to send their kids to school. Virtual learning is not working for everyone. I want to remind you of something that was said on May 7th at your meeting. Dr. Baldwin said, and I quote, "Nothing takes the place of face-to-face contact with our teachers and students." Is that still true, Dr. Baldwin? Of course, it's true, because virtual learning is not the model of a quality education. During that same meeting in May... to choose remote only if that's what's best for their family, but yet 61% of us have chosen face-to-face learning and even the health officials plan to send their kids to school. Virtual learning is not working for everyone. I want to remind you of something that was said on May 7th at your meeting. Dr. Baldwin said, and I quote, "Nothing takes the place of face-to-face contact with our teachers and students." Is that still true, Dr. Baldwin? Of course it's true because virtual learning is not the model of a quality education. During that same meeting in May and almost every meeting since, people have been joining virtually. And to be blunt, if your virtual meetings are any indication of what it's like for students to Zoom to their classrooms, y'all are not doing so well, okay? We've heard people say, "I can't hear you. I didn't hear the answer to that question." Yesterday, every one of your questions to the health panel had to be repeated back to you. It's not easy for students. It's not easy for teachers. The governor's moving in a direction to open up schools and when you have the option of returning kids to the classroom, because the classroom is part of the best practice for education, you have an obligation to do that for those you serve. Tonight and yesterday, you heard an Inca High School student tell you that 44% of her classmates have a failing grade. Not one of you batted an eye or asked her a follow-up question. Are you not concerned that the education you're...
Thank you. That's been three minutes, ma'am. Thank you. Ma'am, we're gonna have to call our next public comment, please.
Teachers can do hard things.
Ma'am, you can submit your comments to...
I would like to speak to the people that are having an impact on my family.
Your three minutes are up.
I understand that and if you'd let me continue, I could be finished.
Sorry. We've got to be here to provide...
I've heard Dr. Baldwin and Ms. Singer say over and over that we have the best teachers, that they can do this.
Ma'am, we're gonna have to call our next public comment.
...answer as to what you're looking for in order for us to return to the classroom. It's just not fair to leave it dangling out there for us. And finally, I'm a soccer coach at Inca High School and what makes me the most sad is that I have seniors who are choosing to graduate early. I could not imagine graduating early from another high school. And it's not because they have a job lined up or they're entering college early. It's because they are counting, they're not counting on me to open schools for them.
Ma'am, I'm so sorry. We are gonna have to allow our next public comment to come now. Thank you. We'd like to bring our next public comment into the room. I would remind you, we do have exactly three minutes, please. Please start with your name and where you're from.
My name is Dawn Conard and I have a freshman at Inca High School. My student is a straight A student who is in three honors classes as well as an athlete who plays basketball and football. I'm here because he is struggling with this virtual learning. The teachers and administration seem to think that we are living in a perfect world where connections are perfect with no issues getting onto Zooms or other platforms. They don't see my son banging his head against his desk when nothing goes right and he knows that I'm gonna have to send yet another email to another teacher and let them know that he was having connection problems that day. The teachers were quoted during the last meeting as being in the groove. I assure you, this could not be further from the truth. I have watched my outgoing, successful son become an angry, frustrated mess. Our kids are not okay and I am pleading with you to give them their lives back. I was listening to the former Education Secretary, Bill Bennett, speak today and he called what is happening to our kids now the greatest case of governmental child neglect that this country has ever seen. He said that the fears, that all, he said he fears that all the associations for teachers and administrators are more concerned with politics than they are with our kids right now and they're pushing that agenda and from what I've seen, I have to agree. And all of this seems par for the course in this information warfare campaign drawn by panic, driven by panic and feelings, not the facts presented. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I would like to call our next speaker, please. As you begin, you'll have three minutes. Please start with your name and where you're from.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Baldwin. My name is Keaton Probst and I'm a sophomore at A.C. Reynolds High School. Because of the board's decision to keep us in a virtual environment, my classmates and I no longer have the option to build a personal relationship with our teachers. I had wonderful teachers last year. Mr. Taylor, Mr. Rice, Mr. Hutchinson, Ms. Klinker, Ms. Lampley, and Ms. Roman all helped build me an educational foundation. This year, my teachers, Mr. Smith, Ms. Alfred, Ms. Hule, my band teacher, Mr. Smith, are all doing a good job, but they can only do so much virtually. Not everyone learns over a screen. Some people need a more hands-on approach in order to learn. Some students use school as a safe place. Some kids need to get away from abuse at home. According to Rain.org, which stands for Rape Abuse and Incest National Network, every nine minutes, Child Protective Services finds evidence for a claim of sexual abuse. Two-thirds of these victims are high schoolers. Virtual environment does not give us the option to get away from these abuses. Teachers cannot report the abuse because they do not see evidence of it. One in seven kids are a victim of child abuse. Student mental health is critical. Being admitted into Zoom meetings does not give us the same interaction with our classmates and teachers. According to the CDC, each year, 3.2 million high school students have at least one documented case of depression. Being in school with our classmates and with our teachers gives us a healthy interaction. For months now, parents and students have wanted to return to in-person learning. If you look at the survey that was sent out, you will see the majority of people have wanted to return to school. It was discouraging that initially we were given a choice, but now that choice has been taken away. Finally, if parents and students have the option to have virtual environment, parents and students should have the same option to be in person. Since March 13th, high schoolers have had four days of in-person instruction. Those four days were like a breath of fresh air. I never thought I'd say this, but I want to go back to school. The decision to keep us virtual will not just affect us this year, but it will affect us for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'd like to call our next speaker. You'll have three minutes and please start with your name and where you're from.
Good evening, Dr. Baldwin and members of the board. My name is Josie Frady and I am a junior at Inca High School. I'm here to ask that you reconsider your board decision to keep high school students virtual through the end of the semester and open them for face-to-face as soon as possible. Anyone who knows me will tell you that I am proud to be a Jet. I am a hard-working student who strives for excellence. My dream is to go to college followed by med school and become a trauma surgeon. For this dream, I need to have the best high school education possible. Because I strive to go into the healthcare field, I need to have hands-on experiences in my health science courses throughout high school. I appreciate the fact that Buncombe County now has a virtual option for students who decide that they prefer that mode of learning, but it does not work for all students and we should have the option to do what we and our parents believe to be in our best interest. Neighboring counties are able to figure it out and I believe that if you truly want to, you can also. There are countless studies on learning styles and multiple intelligences that show that not all people learn the same way. Even in kindergarten, we are given tests and questionnaires to see how we learn best. I am definitely a hands-on learner and I should have that option available. I would say that I struggle with only visual and auditory learning styles the most, but that is what I'm being forced to do by being an only virtual student. I feel that the workload is so much more than ever before. Maybe it is because the teachers think they need to fill the next hour to make up for the 90 minutes that we would have had in class. However, the next Zoom starts and all that work gets pushed to the end of the day and then compounded with other work. For many students, it is just too much. Some of us have jobs to go to or have a sport workout to attend after 3:00 PM and are feeling overwhelmed. Never would I choose this type of learning for myself, but I understand that we all learn in different ways. But again, I appreciate the fact that virtual was and will continue to be a choice for those who want it. It appears that the board thinks that high school students are mature enough to stay home alone every day, manage our own schedules and workloads, feed ourselves, and even take care of younger siblings, but yet we are not mature enough to give our opinions. Members of the board, I beg you to ask our opinions instead of just asking, or instead of just making decisions for us. Please allow the students to return to face-to-face instruction as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. We'd like to call our next speaker. You'll have three minutes and please begin with your name and where you're from.
Thanks. Good evening. My name is Carrie Patrick. I'm here on behalf of my daughter Ella, who's a sophomore. I'm not just gonna speak as a parent, I'm gonna speak as a former board chair of a at-risk high school organization for girls. You are losing your students. You are not handling it very professionally. When you've lost them, they're gone. They're into drugs, they're skipping school, and they're gonna be in the criminal justice system for the next decade. I understand this is stressful. I get it. My husband is in healthcare. We have been dealing with this since it began. You do not get to pack up your things and go home because people are unhappy. Speaking for myself personally, I can't get the measure of someone by sitting on a Zoom call. I can't see how they're behaving when their back is clenched, when they're upset, when they're emotional, when they're not paying attention. I need those people around me. That's how I get information. That's how I'm able to help support them. I'm pretty sure, based on these Zoom meetings, that you have gathered the same information. Furthermore, you are all in here in this room because you see the value of working face-to-face. You understand how important it is for you all to be able to interact. You may not agree, right, but you need to actually speak to each other. Our students need the same thing. Our students need to be in the room. They need to be able to talk to each other and our teachers need to be able to see what is really happening. Please give them this chance. I know you're capable and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. We'd like to call our next speaker. You'll have three minutes. Please start with your name and where you're from.
Hi, my name is Karen Adams. I'm from the Inca District. I have a statement I'd like to read for a fellow parent who was not able to be here today, a short statement and then my personal one as well, but that's all right. Shannon Cooper says, "Virtual learning is not best practice under any circumstances for any age. If there is a chance for students to attend school, then that must be the first and foremost option. If we are not sending students back to school when prompted to, then that is an injustice to their educational and emotional needs. It is an expectation that our district will maintain what is best for all students and that is to be in the classroom. Virtual learning is a Band-Aid for an unexpected and terrible situation. It was and will however, never be the optimal choice. When given the best choice for student health and learning, it is the district's obligation to take it. Otherwise, it is a disservice to the people they ultimately serve, students and their families." And then for mine, I am a parent of a sophomore at Inca High School. He's not an Otter student. He never has been, but he works hard and ultimately does well in classes he's engaged in and sometimes poorly in those which he is not. But now, with virtual learning, he is currently failing two of four classes. One of them is history, which also happens to be his favorite subject. In this case, technology issues are largely to blame. Can't say that I'm surprised. When I was waiting in queue, the television keeps going out and we cannot hear the entire presentation of every, any single person that's been here tonight. My son and I have had some very difficult discussions as of late. We have discussed moving our family to attend school with face-to-face instruction. We have discussed how he no longer wishes to even consider going to college. And just today, he conveyed to me, excuse me, that if virtual learning remains his only option, he'd rather quit school altogether. Be sure these discussions are happening in other homes as well. He and others like him are losing hope. These kids need to return to learn. Thank you.
Thank you. We'd like to call our next public comment speaker. You will have three minutes. Please start with your name and where you're from.
Hello, my name is Janice Hawkins. I'm from Candler. I'm a parent of two high school students that attend Inca High School and I want to first of all say, I am so proud of the students for coming out and telling you how they feel personally. My daughter spoke earlier and I'm just so incredibly proud of the kids that want to have their voices heard. I want to read to you an email that I sent each of you prior to the special meeting where you changed your votes about high school attendance. My scholar and athlete daughter has changed. She's a high school junior who is slipping way into a distant place. I know she's not the only one. Her usually positive attitude and sunny disposition have faded. She's struggling to complete assignments. She doesn't want to ask for help in this virtual world, not with every other kid's face and hers. In a normal class, the teacher demonstrates and instructs and then, near the end of the period, walks around answering questions and offering more instruction to those who need it without having to blurt out in front of everyone that they don't understand something. My son's different. He's okay. He's a sophomore and he's a gamer and he's comfortable with the virtual realm more so than his sister, but he misses school too. He needs to be in the classroom more than he knows. He needs to be in the band class. He needs his teachers. He's trying to grow up and he needs those other adults coaching him along. He needs to hear them saying the same things his mom does, but from an adult other than his mom. I'm worried beyond belief that the damage we have already incurred on our students from being out of the classroom for so long. I'm very disappointed in you as a board, except for the three of you that voted to allow high school students to return to the classroom. To you, I applaud. I'm watching the meeting, or I watched the meeting when you presented, were presented with the two options from the superintendent. You approved one of those opt choices, five to two, but then you decided to come up with your own choice that wasn't a presentation by the schools. In both meetings, what I heard was that the principals and some teachers, personal friends of the chairwoman, wanted high school to remain virtual. I don't think this is a place for your personal relationships to come into play. You are accountable to me. You're accountable to the people that live in Buncombe County, not your friends. The reasons they're given were inadequate. It would be too hard for the teachers to manage in-person instruction and virtual instruction simultaneously. When I agree that it will be difficult, I'm extremely upset that more effort wasn't put forth to find a better solution. Buncombe County Schools impressed me so much this spring. I was very impressed at our ability to adapt quickly, think out of the box, but what happened? Is this the end of our creative thinking? You've stuck us in a new box. So, why this knee-jerk reaction to vote for the whole semester? If there were difficulties related to teacher prep, let's figure it out, but instead you just gave up. Inconvenience the teachers or fail all of the students. Is that really a good decision? You should check the grades of the students to see if this is working. I bet my students aren't the only ones whose grades are suffering and I also bet that my home life isn't the only one that is tense due to angry and frustrated high school students.
Thank you. Thank you. We'd like to call our next public comment speaker. Please begin with your name and where you're from.
First, thank you to the board members and Superintendent Baldwin. After listening to the students, primarily from Inca, what a great representation of what we as teachers are doing in our buildings with how articulate they were and how respectful they were. I'd like to start reminding you that the best decisions are not based on what's popular, but on what's right and based on science in this particular case. I'm a career educator, retired coach, 13 years of the 20-plus in Buncombe County. I wanted to provide a response to the proposed putting kids back in the building as we face the beginning of flu season in conjunction with the lack of downward trending on the rates of infection. We lost a freshman due to COVID last week from Appalachian State who was healthy. He lost his life and his family and friends become part of the grieving masses for more than 205,000 people and growing who have died in the U.S. Teachers are dying too and the science, not political desperation, tells us that the virus is impacting younger and younger demographics. By July, the biggest age group impacted was the 20- to 30-year-old group. Our students are acclimated to virtual modalities and we as teachers are capable and even wired for this type of crisis. We do not need to exasperate the crisis. We do not need our schools to become super-spreeder centers. As the board, you voted to maintain virtual learning until the end of the first semester and then to assess. To whiplash our students again is irresponsible and necessary and going to be unproductive. If we listen to those with expertise, they are warning of an explosion of new cases which equates to more suffering, more loss of life, and the potential of returning to a societal shutdown like we are seeing in Europe. And then what will we say to those who are advocating caution and deliberation? I'm imploring each of you to give us consistency and continuity that we need. Give the support and systems we need. Give us the compassion and respect we have earned. Value our lives, the roles we play in our community. Embrace the reality of how history will reflect on the decisions you make and the impact that those decisions will have. This is literally about life and death and the suffering in between. Fewer than 10% of the population has antibodies for this virus, which is mutating more and more aggressively than the standard flu. At Irwin, we have a teacher who was exposed off-campus to a person unbeknownst to them that had the virus. That was on September 13th. On that Wednesday, my colleague told me not to come into their room because they had just learned the guest that they had had over was positive. He was sent home, or she was sent home, and tested the following Monday. While the parents were negative, their two children were positive. One attends or attended our preschool. Fortunately, both tests were negative for the parents. Imagine the prospect of this in our school system. If we had been back under Plan B with nine preps per teacher for three classes, who would have been covering for our colleagues additional nine preps? It goes without saying would be if that transmission were allowed to occur. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. You're welcome.
Nate McQueen, and I'm a teacher at Irwin High School and a retired coach. And I appreciate, appreciate your time and all the work that you do for us. It's not lost on us.
Thank you, sir. I would like to call our next public comment. You'll have three minutes. Please start with your name and where you're from.
Hi, I'm Sydney Cannon. I'm in sixth grade, and I go to Inca Intermediate. Let me start off by saying I don't like virtual school, and being on a screen all day is scientifically proven to make kids more sad. When I go to school on Monday and Tuesday, I can focus more than when I'm at home. At home, I have more distractions. With the new schedule, I can't get my work done, and if I have a problem, I can't contact my teachers because they're teaching. In conclusion, I think virtual school is harder than going to actual school. Let's go to school. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Please start with your name and where you're from. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Taylor Clayton. Hi, my name is Taylor Clayton. I'm in sixth grade at Inca Intermediate. And my sister is really upset about this, this virtual stuff. When she first found out that she was, that she was doing virtual for a full semester, she was very, very sad. I don't think it's fair that kindergarteners can go to school when they can't even keep their hands to themselves. But yeah, all these high schoolers can't go, go. I think K through 12 should go back full-time. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Ready for our next speaker? Please start with your name and where you're from, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Memphis Clayton, and I am a junior at Inca High School. I'll start off by asking if you truly think you are doing us justice by not sending us to school? If we, if we social distance while at school, why can't we go back like the surrounding counties? I think it's time we stop worrying so much about how COVID is affecting our health and look at how closures of schools is affecting our health, because the mortality rate is extremely low for ages zero to 19. Starting last year, this has been a roller coaster ride for us students. We were told we were going to be out of school for two weeks, and that two weeks turned into the rest of our school year and into the next. Closures of schools is doing nothing but affecting our health negatively. Let's not forget to mention the millions of students that rely on school for hot meals and free or reduced meals. We need face-to-face learning for many reasons. With in-school learning, we learn how to build and maintain friendships, how to act and work with people, form relationships, and learn to appreciate others' perspectives. In school, us students build a strong relationship with our teachers, and students that have a broken home life feel connected when they come to school. The in-person contact provides opportunities to facilitate social and emotional development that are difficult, if not impossible, to replicate in distanced virtual learning. Also, we aren't learning at the potential we could be. And honestly, I can't say I've learned much at all during virtual learning. We have the right to go to school, and it's being stripped away from us like it's nothing. We have to stop wishing for a better reality and force a path with the reality we've been giving. We spoke, now please listen and let us go back to school. Thank you.
Thank you. All ready for our next speaker, please? Please start with your name and where you're from. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Claire Cannon. I'm in sixth grade at Inca Intermediate School. Thank you for letting us speak and for letting us share our opinion. First, I'd like to start with, I have a sister and a cousin in high school, and I think that it's unfair that they can't go to school while the rest of us can. My sister misses her friends, her teammates, her coaches, and her teachers. My cousin is on his last year, and he doesn't want to spend it on Zooms. He's missing all his fun high school things like graduation dances and all that other stuff. Next is I can't speak for all, but I can't say that virtual school for my family is not working. As a kid in a family of five kids, it's been clearly shown that we can't stay focused. When I went to school on Monday and Tuesday, I was a lot more focused and feeling that learning mood. Lastly, virtual school is just wonky. We change school plans and schedules, it feels like every month, and we aren't doing good when we're staying on our screen all day. And it's easy for you guys to make your decisions because you're not the ones going through it. So I'm just going to say, let us all go back to school. Let us all be face-to-face. Thank you.
Thank you. All ready for our next speaker? Please start with your name and where you're from, and we'll have three minutes.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Lyndale Jones, and I'm a mom of a struggling high school student at A.C. Reynolds. She is a new freshman, and I would like to begin by reading you an excerpt from the CDC's website about returning to school. Aside from a child's home, no other setting has more influence on a child's health and well-being than their school. In-person school environment does the following: provides educational instruction, supports the development and social and emotional skills, creates a safe environment for learning, addresses nutritional needs, and facilitates physical activity. Since August 25th, I have been communicating with emails, phone calls, and personal visits to my child's school as she is having extreme technical issues with her classes. She cannot get on Zoom. She does not have internet. We live over Garren Mountain on the other side of Fairview. If it rains, we don't exist. My child's computer program was a Windows 93. After a one-hour Zoom call with the media center that did not yield any results, we then visited the school, and in an overwhelming visit, I have a lengthy email from the media center and technology folks that the Windows 93 program was not submitting PDFs through Google Classroom or Delta Math. My honor-science child has a 44. She has zeros. Her science teacher informed her that there are many students, crying wolf. She has no confidence. I'm on her all the time. Why haven't you gotten this done? Why haven't you made this up? Why didn't you submit it? And she is submitting it over and over again with no results. We now have a new computer. It's working on Windows 04. Some of those submissions are going through, but we're now being told to take pictures of our answers and email them to your teacher. This is how my child spends her day, and then she cries at night because she doesn't feel like anyone believes her or entrusts in her that these technology issues are actually occurring. We are not succeeding with remote learning, even for a bright child that have parents that are involved. And my heart breaks for the children that do struggle and have parents that are not involved. I want to thank you and God bless you.
Thank you. We'd like to call our next speaker. Please begin with your name and where you're from, and we'll have three minutes.
Be here. My name is Janet Sawyer. I have a fifth-grade student who attends the intensive intervention program at Hall Creek, and I first want to say I'm so proud of how eloquently all of the high school students have spoke tonight. I was very impressed with that. My husband and I, of course, are concerned with the physical well-being of our child, but we are more concerned with the overall well-being of our child. Without the consistent rhythm of school, children with autism have anxiety, regression, and behavior problems. We are seeing all of this increase in our child since the cessation of face-to-face learning. She is entitled to a free and appropriate public education. With her father and I both working outside of the home, she's not getting the full support and routine that she so needs. I'm going to share a statement from our own Lieutenant Governor of North Carolina. All families should have the option to send their children back to school full-time, but at a minimum, a governor's plan to reopening schools must allow for children with special needs and IP's the ability to attend school. These exceptional children depend on the public school system to afford them the therapy, the services, and the specialized instruction that only our trained and dedicated educational professionals can provide. Anything less than giving these students and families the options to go back to school full-time is incomprehensible. My daughter has the same teacher that she had last year when we stopped in March, and I have seen more progress in her learning face-to-face with that teacher than anybody else. It is something that I want to see continue. Please allow my child to be face-to-face with her teacher. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All ready for our next public comment speaker, please? Hi, please start with your name and where you're from, and you'll have three minutes.
Hello, my name's Dawn Roberts, and I actually represent two places. One is Inca Middle School where I teach, which is the best place in this county to work. I love how our, our school is bound, bound together and how our, our principal, our administrators, everyone has worked hard to make it work this week with our hybrid model this week. The other group that I represent is North Buncombe High School. My son is a senior, and I found out when y'all made the decision from the emergency board meeting that his, he's, he's going to graduate early, so he's supposed to be out in December. So as a result, he's done, you know, if he's going back in December from this, and it really upset me. I would like for him to be able to go back to school. But I, I do realize what y'all, I appreciate y'all yesterday, listening to all the people talk from all the different panels, giving everybody's insight. That, that just shows just the, the spectrum of one end to the other of how people feel, you know, people who, who are, have a lot of fear and are, are trying to do everything right, and then the other people don't have much at all, and everybody has a little bit of combination of how they feel about that. Not one, two, I don't think any two people feel exactly the same about this virus. So your job is extremely hard, and you're not going to make everybody happy. And I'm not speaking for every teacher, but hybrid learning is hard. I've seen coworkers exhausted this week, and it's hard. But I also know that we need to look out for our high school kids. My son and his friends are having issues, like you've heard over and over again, with them having issues with, with depression or just being motivated. It's gone, and I just pray for you to let them go back to school. And I thank you for all you do and, and the hours you've put into this. Thank you.
All right. Ready for our next public comment speaker? Please start with your name and where you're from. You'll have three minutes.
Sure. My name's Matt. I'm with Biopure here in Asheville. This is a photo of a chemical that was going to be used in the original plan. I understand you had to weigh safety as well as workload placed on teachers when making this decision. This one caused a lot of eye irritation. It had dangers with skin. It was corrosive, and you were recommended to wash every time you used it. So I totally understand with that being sprayed between classes, gets in the air multiple times a day with class changes, safety and workload on teachers also having to moderate the hallways. Our students taking six feet apart, then they got to go back and wipe their desks. It's a lot to take on. Let me read you another statement on this one. Under normal conditions, under normal conditions of use, the solution is not considered hazardous. And that's its hazard statement. None of the same stuff going on with the other. It's three times stronger than bleach, medical and pharmaceutical grade, FDA-approved for public food contact surfaces, and it's even used to purify drinking water. Plus, it's a spray and walk away, eliminating most of the workload. We are Biopure with Asheville. We do germ control. This is all we've done for years, unlike reactionary cleaning companies, and I'm sure you all have investigated many other options out there from companies that jumped in with hazmat suits and dangerous chemicals. Biopure's been doing this for years before COVID. So now, we, going back to workload and safety, consider this. Every desk, table, light switch, doorknob, pencil sharpener being protected, every computer, electronic, violin instruments being safely protected by a safe, invisible, proactively-placed shield that eliminates microbes all day long, all month long, no matter what you do. Now imagine that on your hands in tandem with the surfaces. With Biopure, we can dramatically reduce the opportunity for illness and disease-causing germs to spread. So specifically, that is our Biopure Clean, the world's safest, most effective disinfectant that's exclusive to Biopure. It's that spray-and-walk-away solution. When we apply it with our commercial-grade electrostatics, it completely eliminates everything in the, in the building. We can even bottle it up for teachers to use. Biopure Shield, the antimicrobial that protects for a month. And it's been shown to last even longer than that at times, but studies show a month. And then couple that with the Shield Hand Sanitizer. It's been shown to protect for up to 24 hours after a single application. When you merge all these things together and work together with them, they provide the most, the safest, most efficient, most effective solution on the market, and get this, we offer it for pennies on the dollar compared to competition. No price gouging in this. That's what happened with, when all the pandemic broke out. Also, consider influenza. We're in the middle of flu season, coming right up, strep, staph, stomach bug, anything that spreads by contact, we can safely handle. Teachers, imagine not having to do anything between classes or even just to not have to expose yourself and our children to harmful chemicals over and over again every day. We're Biopure with Asheville, and we want to help your teachers and students. Thank you. Pancarina.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to ask our next public comment to enter, and please start with your name and where you're from. You'll have three minutes.
My name is Courtney King. I have two students at Owen High School right now, and I'd like to say that I'm really proud of all the high school students that spoke today. I think they did a great job. I think that's an excellent example of face-to-face instruction in Buncombe County. There's not a whole lot that hasn't already been said by everyone else, so I'm going to spare you all of that and just tell you what I have found out myself. I called surrounding counties, four surrounding counties one afternoon, and spoke with staff members at McDowell County High School. They let me know they had 1,589 students. One-third of those students chose remote learning. Their schedule was A-week, B-week, broken up by address, and they attended five days a week. So A went five days one week, B went five days the next week, and they switched, and they zoomed in live when they weren't there. They reported zero outbreaks to me as of last week, in the middle of the week. Madison County High School has over 400 attending the high school. Their students attend A/B every other day and remote on Friday. They reported zero outbreaks. Polk County High School has 630 students, and they attend A-week or A/B schedule every other day. So they go Monday, and then the next group goes Tuesday, then, then they have remote Wednesday, and so all of them are different. You know, they've decided that in the board. But all of them reported no trouble. No trouble with kids not wearing masks, not complying with any of their regulations or rules. They were all excited to come to learn, and each one of those people, staff members, were happy to speak to me about anything that I asked and the number of students. Haywood County, I called Tuscola, and they have 970 students, and they're beginning, I guess they begin Monday this week. They chose to do that. What I know is Owen High School has 715 students. I was told roughly 30% chose remote learning, and then I was told roughly 40% chose remote learning. So either way, on a regular A or B day, there would be a little over 200 students spread out between 40 classrooms. That probably comes to about five or six people per classroom. Spread, social distance, it's possible. When I called our own high schools, I called Reynolds High School, and I asked, you know, how many students go to your high school? And they said, they wouldn't give me the answer. They wouldn't even, they, they said, what do you need this information for? They raised suspicion, and I find that to be disheartening. Like, why are you suspicious of people asking questions? But I consider, I
Thank you. Thank you. Please call our next public comment. Please begin with your name and where you're from. please begin with your name and where you're from.
Good evening. My name is Scott Jones. My wife and I have three children, all of whom are students here at Nesbit. First, I want to thank the teachers and the staff and the administration of all the Buncombe County schools for all they're doing for our students in this difficult time. If I have enough time in the three minutes, there are a couple of things I want to address. First, we are all in an impossible situation right now with only bad choices and worse choices. It cannot be easy to be in your shoes. One day, we may be able to look back and know what the right answers were. But right now, all we can do is the best we can with the science and the data that we have in front of us. I believe all of you want what's best for the students and the community. And I know that some of you come to different conclusions, and that's fine. We all come to different conclusions. But I still think you all want what's best for the students and the community. That's why I was so disappointed when I watched the last meeting online, and I saw three of you engage in ad hominem attacks at the other board members and even at staff. You may be right on the issues, and the other people may be wrong, but they're trying to do the right thing, too. You ought to be embarrassed by the way you handled it, and you ought to apologize for the way you handled it. I'm not asking you to apologize for your stand on the issues, but for personally engaging your fellow board members, that way, and right. Now for my second issue. As you continue to make decisions about which students come back and when they come back, I want to ask you not to listen just to the loudest voices or the angriest voices. I want to ask you to look at the data, and I want to ask you to listen to the experts, your educational professionals, the epidemiological experts. If you have a legal question, you're going to ask Mr. Shatley about it. If a pipe breaks in here, I hope you're talking to a plumber about it. We have an educational and health crisis right now. You need to be listening to the epidemiological and the educational experts. You may weigh all of the options, all the pluses and the minuses, and we all know there are a whole lot more minuses than pluses to all the options. And you might come up with a different decision than I do. That's all right. If you do, I'm still going to do the best that I can support you, the best I can to support you. But I want to ask you all to remember, we all want what's best for the students and the community, and we're all in this together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We would like to call our next public comment. Please start with your name, where you're from, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. I am Paula Denga, and I am among quite a number of parents and students who are representing a very powerful and emotional statement about what this means to them as COVID-19 has closed our schools and made this a totally different platform for all of us. I want to thank you all for hosting yesterday's panel and hearing from all of the stakeholders, because I can imagine it is a very impossible decision for you to make. I am a proud member of this staff of Buncombe County schools. I am also a proud mother of a senior here at TC Robertson. So I am experiencing much of the same things that these families are seeing. And I'm also looking from the inside out. And as the President of Buncombe County Association of Educators, I bring with me the voices of hundreds of teachers who are speaking about their experiences so that you could perhaps balance what they're feeling and what they're seeing and what they're doing. This is one of those things that we know is clear for all of us. We are all wanting to see students come back into this classroom, and it doesn't really matter where you're teaching or who you are. We want children back in our classrooms. We know that our job is building relationships and preparing children for their best and brightest future. It's best done in the community of the schoolhouse, the gym, the art studio, the playground, the bandroom, and yes, the classroom as well. There is no argument here, not from any one of us. But we need to make sure we remember the voices from yesterday. Safety first. We have to make sure that we have established safety protocols so that we know when we're welcoming students into our buildings, they are being treated with the utmost of safety and care, because no one wants to be in the position that many people have found them in. We know Dr. Mullendor and Stacy Saunders said yesterday that the three W's are additive. And it is arguable, though, that we are enjoying a 2.3% positive test rate because we are maintaining a combination of remote and six-feet social distancing while in person. No one wants to read the stories like the healthy asymptomatic young man from App State who died after weeks of being ill, nor the teacher, Demi Bannister, and her mother Shirley, who passed away within weeks of each other after Demi returned to the classroom. The three teachers in Arizona who did all of the right things, or the multitude of young children who have died, or those who have survived, having their lives and their health forever damaged by the effects of this disease. Nobody wants to be in their shoes, and not certainly on our watch. Dr. Mullendor responded yesterday when we talked about the specialists traveling between schools that we wanted to make sure that the three W's were followed. Three, all three of them. Plan A provides a lot of obstacles to that. So when you're considering possibly voting tonight, Plan A cannot be one that we look to. I implore you not to vote tonight. Thank you, Dawn Roberts.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you. I'd like to call our next public comment. Please start with your name and where you're from, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Kristy Cor, and I teach third grade at Estes Elementary School. I want to thank you all for listening to our comments today. I know the past couple months have been tough for everyone. And today, I'm here not to speak just directly to the board. I also have a few other groups of people I would like to address. To the parents and guardians and students of Buncombe County, I know none of you are the same, and I recognize our county is very diverse. We have a wide range of opinions on what should be happening during this time, which no one, none of us saw coming. There are opinions on what virtual learning should look like, what platforms students should be learning on, how much Zoom time should be provided for your child, how feedback is given, et cetera. I'm here to tell you, the teachers hear you, and we're doing the best we can with what we're given. We understand your frustrations when assignments aren't loading and the audio on Zoom doesn't work. Please remember, we may fake it really well, but we are not technology experts. All we can do is apologize and try to find the best way to support you through this situation. Over the first six weeks, there have been emails telling us we aren't grading fast enough, we aren't perky or cheerful enough, we shouldn't be redirecting students who are not on task on Zoom. We are just lazy, and we don't want to teach in person, and how dare us cancel our Read Aloud to go to the dentist and take care of our own health? We are humans with families, stresses, anxieties, and obligations that have nothing to do with our job. To the parents who have been supportive and reached out positively, thank you. We need to be on the same team right now. We appreciate the kind words and understanding that we may need grace as well. To the teachers and principals of BCS, teachers, this is hard on us all. It's very difficult in your world, and we are all in a completely unique situation. No matter if you want Plan A, B, or C, we need to do it safely, and we need to support each other. Principals, we see you, too, and we appreciate you. I know it's hard, and you're in the same boat we are, but with amplified complaints and demands. Thank you for working your hardest for your teachers. And to our board, I hope my words can inform your opinion on moving to Plan A for a K-5. Please consider giving us some consistency. Let us stay in the plan we have just begun until we have a good grasp on how it is working. Putting all the little kids in one room with minimal social distancing will eliminate a huge W in the three W's. When we loosen our protection and pile three kids to a seat on an unventilated bus, this is not benefiting anyone. We know in-person learning is the best for our students, but we need to do it safely. As Dr. Baldwin stated in the last board meeting, the key is the three W's. If we take one away, it reduces the strength of the total three. I would also like for you to advocate for reasonable teaching expectations. When we hear comments from staff stating, "Good teachers will do whatever it takes to make this happen." It makes us sound like we should give up family time, our weekends, our nights, our time with our family and friends, and all other things we need to make us better teachers. Our county should prioritize what's important. Do we really need all these extra PDs? Could we live without the extra staff?
Yeah, sorry, that's been three minutes. Thank you. We would like to call our next public comment. Please start with your name, where you're from, and you'll have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Kirby. Let me start by saying I do not envy the decisions that you have to make. I understand this is a really difficult situation, and there is no right answer, and everyone's just trying to find the best way through. I have two children at Camler Elementary, a third and a first grader. It's my first grader that I want to speak about. My first grader is in the dual-language program. It is my understanding that the teachers have been advocating for the dual-language kids to go back more than twice a week. As a parent of a child in the program, I would like to add my vocal and public support to that endeavor. The dual-language program works through immersion. It's why the first three years are done in 90% Spanish. A handful of 20-minute Zooms, and a parent with Google Translate on their phone is a completely inadequate substitute for being in the classroom. My daughter's teacher is a creative, resourceful, resilient educator, but she and all the teachers in the dual-language program have been asked to do an impossible task and make a limited online experience immersive. It is my daughter's birthday today, and she told me her teacher's present was letting her come to school. I would like for all the students to have the option to return to school, but I ask that you strongly consider allowing at least the dual-language kids returning more than twice a week. Thank you for your time and for listening.
Thank you. All right, we're ready for our next public comment speaker, please. Please start with your name, where you're from, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Tracy Harrell. I have two children at Haw Creek Elementary School. Let me first say thanks to you all for your efforts in regard to this reentry discussion. I know it has not been easy, and I have not always agreed with your decisions, but I have always had a deep respect for your efforts. I know you each are trying your very best, as we all are. So I appreciate that. I would say that our communities are best served when everyone can attend school in person. I'm here tonight to advocate for expediting the reentry process to the fullest capacity allowable by the state of North Carolina and to do so immediately. So no alternating days as opposed to alternating weeks as this would provide five days of instruction for every 10 as opposed to only four days of instruction for every 10. Also, fully allowing K through 5 to attend all five days in person. This is what I mean by maximum allowable by the state of North Carolina. The immediate return to in-person learning does not have to be antagonistic to those who wish to continue in a virtual setting. Opening up options for one group does not have to equate to limiting options for another group. Students and teachers alike who currently want to continue virtual learning shouldn't be able to do so. There's no reason why we can't have both of these options available. For those who want and need to return to in-person learning, they should be allowed the option to choose. I would like to cite a survey that was recently conducted and has, of course, been mentioned already tonight by the board at the beginning of the semester wherein over 90% of the parents said that they were comfortable or neutral with the safety measures in place at these schools and also comfortable or neutral returning to school. When you take away the option for children to attend public school, many are sent to childcare centers, homes, or alternative facilities with no licensed educators or qualified caregivers. This is not better than attending school in person. There is already a severe childcare shortage in WNC, Western North Carolina. And according to a survey recently done by Buncombe County, about 30% of these children in this area have, only about 30% of children in this area who need care actually get the full coverage of care that they need. This was before the public school option was taken away. Now, I wonder what the statistic looks like that there is no public school option for these children during the day. There is also the issue of routine. Kids in general, and especially elementary-age children, need routine and structure. And the best way to attain this is for them to come to school in person five days a week in a safe and structured environment built for learning, built specifically for learning. COVID is not the only public health risk. There are many others, and I hope that we consider them all. Thank you so much for your time tonight and for listening to the public.
Thank you. We're ready for our next speaker, please. Please start with your name, where you're from, and you'll have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Olivia Jones, and I am a junior here at Nesbit Discovery Academy. I have watched the past few board meetings on the live streams, and I truly appreciate that you are working hard for the students and for the whole school district. As a high school student, I do have a few concerns that I would like to address to you. All of the decisions that you have to make right now are hard, and high school issues are no different. I know that online learning is a challenge, but going back in person fully or partially also raise issues. Partially in-person learning makes it harder for students who have to do asynchronous work or who have to regularly change their learning environment from asynchronous to synchronous to in-person, as an example. Any in-person learning also raises additional health concerns because of the age, and as a result of the age, a higher risk for transmitting or getting coronavirus. Erupt changes in plans with rapid implementation are also hard for everyone to adjust to. So I ask that you prepare plans to go to 100% remote so I ask that you prepare plans to go to 100% remote after a partial or full return to school if that is to occur, and for any plans you create, to have a plan for implementation after a preset statistical or other mark that you rely based on science. Thank you so much for looking at science and for looking at what epidemiological experts are saying right now. It is important that we follow the ever-changing science because everything is always changing, and now is no exception. One of my friends gave me a metaphor that I would like to share with you now. In a snow day, some people might be able to get to school if their driveway is unsafe to drive through. Some people might not have snow in their driveway. It is, even right now, there are probably more people who have snowy driveways than do not. We need to make sure that we are safe for everyone. Thank you so much for your time. Have a great evening.
Thank you. We're ready for our next public comments speaker. Please start with your name and where you're from, and you'll have three minutes.
All right, thank you. My name is Aria Williams.
Please step up to the mic. Thank you.
My name is Aria Williams, but I'm here on behalf of the B.C. Student Coalition, which represents students throughout the Buncombe County area. Shortly before in-person onboarding occurred, Buncombe County reached 2,019 cases. In just the six-week sense, we have surpassed 3,100 cases. The percent positive rate has thankfully come down since the summer. However, we are constantly on the edge of spiking again. As of now, we are seeing the rate begin to rise. It is wholly irresponsible and negligent to move forward with Plan A for our elementary school students. We are already asking a lot of our youngest learners under Plan B. Many adults themselves still struggle to maintain proper social distancing and mask usage. The last thing we need to do is bring more kids into our schools at once. It will further reduce the capacity to provide proper social distancing and for students and educators. Plan B itself presents risks in augmenting communal transmission. I understand that children at this stage of it, educational development present a unique situation. They need to learn how to learn, and that is a difficult process to conduct virtually. However, it isn't impossible. We do not need to assume the risks of Plan B or Plan A because taking the path that protects our community the most is deemed too arduous. Avoiding reopening would also allow for schools and the resources that would have been used to be made available for the most vulnerable students that need support. The board could and should work with our educators and students more to, in order to adapt online learning. As a student, I don't feel like my opinion is valued when it comes to my education. While you've worked with some groups of educators, you have not sought to work with students to collaborate to make online learning work. This is a disservice to all of us. Buncombe County students are incredibly bright and have a lot to say about our online educations. Our freedom, not our freedom, our feedback matched with our tech savviness can help make the problems that are causing online learning to not be successful. We can address those problems if you work with our students who are taking on the responsibility of online education every day. Every part of our community is affected by school reopening. In each school, there are countless students, custodians, educators, and other staff members. Those family members, at the end of each day after congregating, they all go home to their families. Those families include people who are immunocompromised, workers that have high-risk jobs for transmitting COVID-19, and countless others that will be potentially exposed from spread in schools. Whatever outbreaks occur will put the health of all of our community at risk for exposure, not just the people inside of our schools. What could possibly be the justification for the trauma and disruption that will occur from these outbreaks when we reopen? We need to work together to figure out how to make online learning work. I understand it is difficult.
Thank you. Thank you. Please feel free to email the board additional thoughts. Welcome. Please start with your name and where you're from, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Susan Pethel, and I'm the parent of a high school student at TC Robertson and a student at Kane Creek Middle School. I was fortunate enough to come yesterday to be a part of the parent panel, but you can see my dedication, and then I'm untiring until the high school students will be back in school. I will be here and keep fighting. I'm going to start with a quote that I ended with yesterday. Quote, "It is easier to build strong children than to repair broken adults." I believe your decision, excuse me, the reversal of your decision to not allow high school students is doing just that. You're breaking our children. My high schooler, as his little brother got to go to school today, was jealous. He said, "Mom, why don't they care about us?" That is what these kids feel. They're not equal. You're not treating them as equal. The K-38 students, the staff, it's okay and it's safe enough for them to return. Of course, it's safe enough for the high schoolers to return. WLOS last Friday said that the Health Department had 558 cases, active cases of COVID in Buncombe County. In 2019, there were 261,191 people in the county. That means the infection rate is 0.213. I'm going to repeat that again, 0.213. That is absolutely safe enough for us to go back. I'm a healthcare worker, and I've been working since March. No one that I've been working with has been sick. We take the proper precautions, and we're out there. I, like many other parents, have also had to make the tough choice. Do I quit my job? Do I reduce my hours? Or do I leave my kids at home to learn by themselves? I'm not the only one who's had to make those tough choices. You are impacting the finances, the emotional stability of homes across this county. And I know from reading your profiles that you guys haven't had to experience it firsthand because you don't have those high school students, but we've been living with it for the last six months, and you're going to ask us to continue to do this. It's not right. Data, northcarolina.gov website. Quote, "Data from other countries does not show a large spread of COVID-19 associated with schools being open for instruction. International data show limited transmission in schools when a child was infected. Schools have not seemed to play a major role in the spread of COVID-19, especially in cases with low viral transmission. Overall, countries that have reopened their schools after infection rates had gone down did not see a large rise in infection in the population level. Less than six feet of social distancing may be protected."
Yes, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Let the high schoolers go back. Don't discriminate.
Thank you. I would like to ask our next public comments speaker to enter. Please start with your name, where you're from, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Leslie Cannon, and I'm from the Inca District. I have a senior at Inca High School and an eighth grader at Inca Middle School. I'm actually starting with a statement that was given to me by another parent that was unable to stay tonight, and this is what they have to say. "Thank you Buncombe County Board and School Superintendent for having us and allowing us to speak to you on behalf of our high school students and parents. From my observation of the work session board meeting yesterday, it seemed that the main concern aside from safety is the lack of time that teachers have to prepare for classes and Zoom meetings. First of all, I have several teacher friends, family, and acquaintances that we love, respect, and cherish, and we know that they do their best to provide the best possible education for our kids. I'm not going to pretend to be an educator or act as though I understand what it takes to prepare or plan for a class, but is it not true that teachers have no kids or Zoom meetings from 7:30 to 9:00? They have an hour planning period each day and no kids or Zoom meetings from 2:00 to 3:30? That's approximately 20 hours a week out of a 40-hour work week or four hours of every eight-hour workday. That is half of every workday. This is for teachers to plan and prepare their classroom for A/B students and remote kids. Before COVID, what more extra time did they have besides the one-hour planning period each day? I, for one, never thought I would hear my son beg for the day they could return to school. We all need to recognize these kids are our future. They are our priority. We owe it to this generation of kids to guarantee them the best education, and that is most definitely face-to-face learning. My son has taken Spanish II this year. He was Spanish I when COVID hit. He only got half a semester of Spanish I. How do you think it's possible for him to efficiently pass a Spanish II class when he didn't even get half of Spanish I? This is just one example of many I know you have heard and are going to hear. I would like to urge the board to consider not only all the things social that is damaging that's occurring in these kids' lives, but most importantly, the education. Part of education is day-to-day socialization with their peers. In this day and time, they don't need, they need that skill to have general conversation with each other because they don't need more technology in their lives. So I thank you so much for listening to us, and we tonight just represent a small portion of parents and students in the county that feel the same way. After the last board meeting, we organized a group, and we have over 580 people that feel the same way we do. And I don't think you want all of them coming in here tonight to talk to you, but I'm sure a lot more would. So there's a lot of us out there that want our kids to go back to school, so we'd appreciate if you would send them back. Thank you.
Thank you. Would call our next public comments speaker. Please begin with your name, where you're from, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, it's great to be here tonight. My name's Amanda Lampley, and I represent the AC Reynolds High School. I'm a teacher there, and I just, first off, want to say I appreciate the board for all the work you're doing. I am so thankful for Dr. Baldwin, for the way you have stood up for educators, for the way you have made clear the difficulties faced in a high school environment. It's been really great to know that I work for you and that I saw the video where you were packing lunches last spring, and you've been my hero. So I just want to really say I appreciate you. And my administration at AC Reynolds has been phenomenal. During the first two weeks of onboarding, I felt incredibly safe. I know my administration cared for me, and I know they cared for the kids, and they are doing everything that they can. What I will say is that what's being asked of high school teachers is exhausting. I feel, I'm an English teacher, so to quote Tolkien and Bilbo Baggins, "I feel like butter spread over too much bread." That right now, what you're asking of me to teach in this way is going to leave someone, and what I'm afraid is going to leave remote-only students behind. So my biggest recommendation is that when we look forward to the spring, that we start thinking about how to creatively solve those solutions with remote-only teachers for remote-only students. And I know that's going to make one of my administrators, who has to redo the scheduling, really upset, but she'll do it. And that is one of the best things you can do for teachers right now, that spreading us between students coming back in person and remote-only is causing that extra burden of multiple preps. I also want to say that I've been a, I'm a nationally board-certified teacher. I have been an incredible online teacher. I have enjoyed it. The kids have been engaging with me. There's been a lot of positive moments. I've also seen things from students to show their depression, the way they are struggling with mental illness, and I do believe we need to get students back in a classroom. I think that needs to be done in a really measured way, and it needs to be very safe. And one of my recommendations is that we do not start with class changes. The idea of starting with four class changes in a day, the first day we come back, is something that I am not ready to even fathom how we will do that. And with that in mind, how I'm going to navigate the multiple technical challenges that come with the Zooms and trying to, what needs to happen is a slow process where students are learning how to get back in the classroom in a safe and effective way and that teachers are feeling that they can effectively work on that remote-only and in-person face-to-face instruction.
Ten seconds.
You guys have an incredibly hard, no one's going to be, not everyone is going to be happy, and so I appreciate the work you're doing to make this happen.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate everything.
Thank you.
I ask you to be consistent with this and maybe don't change again because it's overwhelming the teacher of the week.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Yes, have a good night. Madam Chair, this does conclude our public comment for this evening.
The next slide, on the agenda, superintendent comments.
First thing I'd like to do is echo, I think we heard this from several speakers tonight, just how proud I am, and I know this entire board is, with our student speakers. And that's not only tonight, the students that came before us, but yesterday. I think each school and the teachers that, all the way back from kindergarten, should be very proud that their young men and young women stood before us and spoke so eloquently. So I want to start out with that reference. Despite the challenges of COVID, our process to select the Buncombe County School 2021 Teacher of the Year has continued. And so I want to congratulate the following teachers for being chosen to represent their particular district. Sarah Moore at Pisgah Elementary. Mr. Queen representing the Inca District. Mallory Morrell at Woodfin Elementary, representing Mr. Bright, the Irwin District. Toby Anderson at North Buncombe High School, representing the North Buncombe District. Madam Chair. Leanne Gossi at Owen High School, representing the Owen District. Ms. Buchanan. Maureen Welbury at Avery's Creek Elementary, representing the Robertson District. Ms. Churchill. And Catherine Strickler at Kane Creek Middle School, and she represents the Reynolds District. Ms. McMahon. And Jason Rhodes at Middle College represents our non-traditional schools. Ms. Pate, I know you represent that group, and I want to say an extra special congratulations goes out to Mr. Jason Rhodes, who was selected our 2021 Buncombe County Schools Teacher of the Year. And I had the opportunity, along with Ms. Swanger, I thought Ms. Pate was there. We went out to Middle College and presented that award to Mr. Rhodes, and some of you may recall that Mr. Rhodes was actually working in our Communications Department. We were able to attract him from our neighboring Henderson County, where he was also the Teacher of the Year there. So I knew, after several conversations with him, I had no doubt that he was going to go back to those kids in the classroom and what a treasure and what a gift he has been for all of them. So congratulations, Jason, and to your family, his wife is one of our, actually, Councilors of the Year at Reynolds Middle School. I want to thank Mr. Huff, our Assistant Superintendent, for leading a very successful, safe school symposium that occurred last Wednesday. Biltmore Church graciously hosted the event, and we had a record turnout. We heard a presentation, Mr. Huff, from the retired Coral Springs Police Chief Tony Prestisi regarding the tragic event that occurred at Stoneman Douglas High School in 2018, where he and his force actually responded that day. Seventeen individuals tragically lost their lives in that school shooting. And regarding school safety and security in Buncombe County schools, I also want to do a shout-out to our county commissioners and members of the School Capitol Commission, which Mr. Queen chairs. They recently awarded $660,000 in security upgrades for our campuses. So thank you, county commissioners, and thank you, Mr. Queen, to the commission itself. Later within the agenda, you will be asked to approve revisions to two of our policies. That is 4315 and 4316. Both revisions support and enhance looking at current practices through an equity lens. This includes methods of teaching that are culturally responsive to our students and their families throughout Buncombe County. In support of these revisions are three current and future initiatives. First is an 18-month commitment to participate in the North Carolina Social-Emotional Learning Equity Project through the Department of Public Instruction. And during this time, we will review and examine historical and current data that will include student attendance, student discipline, academic achievement, course placement, and graduation rates, along with employment opportunities. Second is adopting a national program framework. It is known as CASL, and that is the Collaborative Advancement of Social-Emotional Learning. And this effort blends social-emotional learning, and you've heard that term often over the years through Mr. Thompson, into classroom instruction. It's actually occurring right now in our virtual instruction. The third initiative is soon to be created, and that is a community advisory council that will help us better recognize the needs and issues of our very diverse school communities. And again, this will be centered around the concept of equity. And I'm going to be asking certainly for volunteers on the board, and if I don't get volunteers, I'm going to be selecting three of you to serve on that community advisory panel. District leadership has asked, has been asked to provide a recommended plan to address the potential return of grades K through 5 students who are currently receiving in-person instruction two days a week under Plan B to in-person instruction under Plan A. In addition, we've been asked to include in that proposal the return of our high school students to in-person instruction under Plan B. Madam Chair, we are prepared to provide that recommendation during the discussion portion later in the agenda that's been added to the agenda, and hopefully it will serve as a good starting point for that discussion. We've received a number of inquiries as to the justification for selecting K-5 in that Plan A option, so I thought it might be helpful to actually just read the statement that was provided to us from the governor's office. And this is that statement. Again, why Plan A for K-5? Emerging research on COVID-19 shows that young children, particularly children under 10 years of age, may be less likely to spread COVID-19 to others than older teens and adults. The decision to allow schools and districts to move to Plan A only for students in grades K through 5 at this time was based largely on this emerging research. If a school building serves kindergarten through 5th grade in addition to other grades from October 5, 2020 until further notice, only the K-5 grades may operate under Plan A. Now, this is important to us because later we're going to talk about, I'm going to use the term, the intermediate school dilemma. We will continue to evaluate emerging scientific evidence and look forward to the eventual increase of in-person instruction for 6th through 12th graders. Because we've had such a volume of questions that have come to us in terms of why, I thought it might be helpful if I actually just read that statement from the governor's office. So, thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Now we move to the action agenda. The first item on the action agenda is the 2020-2021 budget adoption. And are there questions for Ms. Frisbee? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve. Thank you. Could I get a second?
Second.
That was Amy. Ms. Matthews is looking back there. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the memorandum of understanding with the county board of commissioners, right? Regarding our solar projects, and that would be, we're going to focus on the attorney, Clark Wyatt. Are there questions from the board? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve this memorandum.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve this memorandum of understanding with the county.
Thank you. And could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Could I get discussion?
At least for me personally, my questions were answered, and I'm comfortable with where we are in moving forward with it.
Okay, thank you. And that's a good point. We have spent a lot of time in preparation and discussion of this item. So, any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now, the next item on the action agenda is the consideration of Buncombe County Schools' return to learn and discussion in that regard. Should I recognize Dr. Baldwin? Ms. Swanger?
Madam Chair, before we get started, I would just like, don't need to hold you up in your walk there, but I'm just hoping that we can consider these two separately, no matter what, you know, they may all be going back or they may not, but they do feel like two different populations, and so I'm hopeful that we can have two motions to address these two separately.
As the discussion goes, we will keep that in mind. As the discussion goes, we will keep that in mind.
Thank you.
I appreciate that, but I do want to remind the board that, based upon your request yesterday, we, the district leadership, were asked to bring to the table a recommendation that addressed both the return of high school students to in-person instruction under Plan B, as well as the transition of our kindergarten through fifth-grade students under Plan A. So we treated them both concurrently. But I certainly respect that recognition of the difference between. Based on hearing from a wide range of stakeholders' opinions, along with the feedback from our Return to Learn Planning Committees, as well as our public health experts, and what we've heard, the board has heard. Yesterday, for the public, it was about a four-hour session of five panels, students, parents, teachers, principals, and public health experts. You were inundated with quite a bit of information, but I, as the superintendent, hearing it all at once, was certainly amazed at the range of opinion and concerns and issues that were raised. And I think that's so characteristic of what we have been dealing in COVID land since March of last spring. So I do want the public to understand that you have heard, and I applaud you for doing this, by the way, taking the time to hear from so many different contingents and stakeholders, constituents and stakeholders out in your particular districts, as well as across the Based on hearing from a wide range of stakeholders' opinions, we would propose that high school students, grade nine through 13, that have chosen Plan B, return to in-person learning two days per week, again, that's Plan B, beginning November 9. Likewise, we propose that on November 9, again, we treated them as requested concurrently, students in grades K through four that have chosen Plan B, transition from their current two days per week to four days per week under Plan A. In both cases, Wednesdays, we request and recommend to remain as remote learning days for all students. I also want to express some basic thoughts to the board that were associated with this recommendation. Number one, this recommendation would only impact students and families that chose prior to the school year the Plan B option. It would not impact those students and families that chose remote only. And I also remind the board that, as we move further into this semester, we have to give consideration to returning back to those remote-only families that chose that mode of learning, because the semester commitment was only to the semester. So I think we have an obligation to reach back out to them in the near future for that commitment to be extended. Number two, we would not be ready, and we strongly believe this, we would not be ready on October 5 to operate schools to accommodate grades K through five, transitioning from the current Plan B to Plan A. A reasonable period of time, such as six weeks, needs not only to be provided for preparation, but to allow time to observe and learn from the recently initiated operation under Plan B. And we heard that loud and clear yesterday, if you recall. We heard that loud and clear from the planning committees, especially at the elementary and intermediate level. In considering fifth graders transitioning to Plan A, and I mentioned this before, we have the intermediate school dilemma. First, there is a school bus occupancy issue. The maximum ridership on a bus occupied by fifth and sixth graders retains the requirement of one student per seat. The numbers would require additional buses, additional bus drivers, additional temperature monitors, all of which would be significant issues for our school system. You've heard us so many times over so many years, we struggle finding our bus drivers. We're so thankful for those, and we have some that have been driving for many, many years. They're heroes. Second, the logistics of operating within the building under a different set of requirements for fifth-grade classrooms as compared to sixth grade would be quite challenging. You heard that yesterday from those intermediate school administrators. Now, I want to mention this to the board. You are aware that we have six school districts. We have four intermediate schools. Two of those districts do not have the intermediates. That is Reynolds, and that is Owen. So they have a scenario, in fact, you heard from a principal yesterday from the Reynolds District, they have a scenario where they have the K through five, or some combination that includes five, that does not extend beyond that. So it leads to a dilemma. We're simply providing to you as a recommendation, again, remember, we're providing this because we got to start somewhere. The tough job is taking that recommendation, working it through, taking all the information that you've been inundated with, and trying your very best to find the most win and the less loss decision. But that is a concern that needs to be discussed with the board. We simply are saying K-4 because four of our six districts have intermediate schools, and it is, it will be a dilemma in each one of those to maintain the fifth graders under The November 9 return would allow for 10 previous weeks of continuity under the remote learning model. Now, you've heard a lot about that from students, from teachers, from parents. We've heard variants in terms of how successful has it been? And a parent referenced something I said, and I will tell you, I believe that, that nothing takes the place of the face-to-face interaction between that teacher and student. We're in a pandemic. We're in a pandemic that forced us to move to virtual last March. The pandemic is still here. And from an educational standpoint, I, as superintendent, would not argue with that. But there's other factors at play and other challenges that makes this decision so, so hard for everyone. The return date of November 9 would accommodate time for in-person instruction and course review as students prepare to take exams prior to ending their semester on December 18. Now, remember, you approved the school calendar, the intent was for that semester to be completed, and there's a lot of rationale behind that. The advantage of having the semester done and the exams. And for many of our students, especially those seniors, especially when you get into state exams, and as we've recently become aware of, the state is currently, it requires in-person administration of all state exams. So we could have students that depend upon that exam grade and course for graduation purposes. So that's important. Again, you've been armed with a lot of information. You've heard different starts and stops for high schools. We've tried to provide a date that recognizes both. You're asked to do. Now, beyond those basics, we believe that it is important that dedicated efforts, that our school-based employees, our teachers, our administrators, and all the support staff, whether it be bus drivers, child nutrition, custodians, whoever it may be, that the dedicated efforts that they have made to successfully carry out to the best of their abilities the responsibilities that have been handed to them by the state, number one, and by you, the local Board of Education, in your duties. We think it's very important to recognize them, because those are heroes. And I was so proud to hear a number of community members, over the past several days, recognize that. We can't recognize them enough. They are on the battlefield. But as we said yesterday, and we heard, we heard from almost every administrator, "Board, here's the challenges, you tell us where we need to go, we're going to do everything in our power to make it happen." And that's what's occurred out there. Now, have we had technical issues? You better believe it. We have had those. We've had a number of issues, but the effort has always been there, all the way through in this school system. And that's because of the people in the trenches out of those schools. So we can't forget the importance of that, regardless of what the decision is. We got to remember that, because without the staff, without the bus driver bringing those kids in, we don't have school, we don't operate school. And in closing, this recommendation, in addition to any current, future plans of operations, must take into account the reality of the COVID pandemic we currently face. It has not gone anywhere. And that is that every decision that we make is subject to change. That change can be dependent on the health conditions in our schools, and it can also be a response to the COVID-19 metrics in our community. I'm proud of this board, because from the start, as we entered into this whole challenge with COVID-19, we made sure we listened to our public health experts. We got to keep an eye on what's happening out there, because change can happen like that. And I know, just as human beings, change is hard, and we've all heard so many challenges within our communities. Putting additional change is the disruption, but it's the reality of what we are dealing with. And we cannot forget that we are responding to a current pandemic that has not gone anywhere. The positivity rates, thankfully, are good. We heard that yesterday. We want them to stay that way, because in many cases, these are life and death decisions. And I think each and every one of you understand that. And again, I applaud the efforts that each and every one of you make, and I know in your heart, you're doing the best in your heart and mind you can for our kids. We stand ready, whatever decision is made, we stand ready as district leadership, along with our school-based leadership and staff, to be as successful as we possibly can to carry out the decision from this board. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I guess we need to move in.
Can I ask him a clarifying question before he leaves the mic?
Sure.
I just want to make sure I understood you correctly. So for K-4 going into Plan A, did you say that Wednesday would remain a remote day under this proposal?
That would be for K-4, moving to Plan A, our recommendation would essentially mean they would go from two days to four days, and those four days would be Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday.
And so what's the rationale for that, and what would be the use of Wednesday in that case?
I think, again, the Wednesday date allows some additional preparation time for our teachers. It also allows, and we talked about, the opportunities to focus, additional cleaning. We think that's important, and we heard the importance of that from a number of our staff
Dr. Baldwin, I have a clarifying question. You mentioned earlier that the K-4 students in all the districts except for Owen and Reynolds would be on Plan A, and the fifth graders in the Owen and Reynolds districts, because they are not in intermediate schools, would be on Plan A?
Well, I think that's, our recommendation is clean, K-4. So that would mean that what's coming to you is that for fifth grades in that Reynolds and Owen district, that they would be continuing under Plan B. But I do recognize that that's part of a dilemma, because four of our six are intermediate and two are not. So we just want to make the board aware of that. But it's similar to what we do in terms of closing the school district. It's a majority that closes the school district. We don't look at it from an individual district standpoint. Now, we've certainly had questions about that as well over the years, but this is our best recommendation. And again, it's trying to give you something that meets both of those transitions that we were requested to look at.
Other questions for Dr. Baldwin?
Madam Chair, I don't have other questions, but I have some thoughts, not knowing what this was going to be, that I, like Ms. McMahon, I normally put my thoughts into words, but I have put some things into words that I would at some point like to share related to all of this in terms of reentry, when the time is appropriate.
It is.
Now, thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, I wanted to take a few minutes, and let me stop and just say, if I repeat something that's been done, I'll try to skip through it, but some of the things that have been talked about are in these thoughts. So I'll reiterate, or it might be a little bit different, but I'll try to maintain the clarity. I want to take a few minutes and offer some thoughts of where we are and where I would like to see this board go as it relates to, for me, the broad-term reentry. I want to start by thanking all of the school system and central office staff, who since late spring, early summer, have worked diligently to provide us as a board with as much information as possible to help us in making these difficult decisions. I would also like to thank the members of the Buncombe County Health Community, who have had at least three Zoom sessions that I can remember, and I've got COVID memory problems, with small groups or the entire board to answer our questions and provide as much information from a science and health perspective as possible, as we consider the decisions we are tasked with making related to COVID-19 in our schools. So what have we learned? I can't speak for all of us, but I've learned the following, among many things that I would like to share. Number one, I've learned that since this process started, for me and the committee meetings in June of 2020 with staff, et cetera, Dr. Baldwin, as you said tonight, has consistently said, the one constant in this is going to be change, and that everything we are doing as a system is geared to the time when we eventually will be back in what is known as an A-school setting, whether across the board, as a system, or in varying school levels, elementary, middle, intermediate, high school, however it would play out. I've learned from a recent system survey analysis just this week that reflects Buncombe County Schools in an all-virtual mode, that the schools in our school system with the highest population of our at-risk students, those students are not engaged, and I put that term in quotations, because that was the term that was given to us and the way it was asked of teachers, on average, approximately one-third of the it was asked of teachers, on average, approximately one-third of the time in a survey of those teachers. Five of those schools are in the district I proudly represent, the Irwin District. These are the students who need a voice and who our actions are disproportionately affecting. Having said this, I would much rather have been provided information in all of the schools on absences. What percentage of students today, if final grades were given, have a D or an F? And how many students, if we follow our attendance policies on grades, would fail the class regardless of what level of work they have accomplished in this amount of the semester? That would have been better information for just me, maybe not for all, but for me, as I have heard from multiple teachers directly who have said, and I quote, "If we enforce the attendance policy in BCS, I will have a high percentage of students who will fail my class." I've learned that even as we as a board reversed our decision on bringing the 19, nine to 13 students back into the buildings on an AB schedule, our Buncombe County Schools, high schools are doing, and/or have begun to set up doing individual and/or small group tutoring sessions in the high school buildings outside of the system function of bringing students to campus on Wednesdays, bringing those students who have the greatest level of gaining access through their own transportation into the building for extra help. I had heard this for about a week out there on the streets, and I didn't believe it. And then one of our presenters from one of our high schools laid it out for us in our work session yesterday, all the while advocating for having our high schools remain completely virtual through the end of the semester. Again, in my mind, disproportionately impacting our students who do not have the means to come to campus for that help. I've also learned, and I think we all have, that our educators, parents, students, and community stakeholders, those who are both for coming back to school and against it, are passionate about communicating with board members through email and text, and are as passionate about it during the school day as they are in the evenings or on weekends. For those educators who have expressed your opinions to us as a board after your work hours, I appreciate you for doing that. I have learned that we as a system seem to have forgotten that the impacts of COVID-19 and the lack of face-to-face learning and those impacts on young people have been going on for longer than just the time from mid-August to now in the 2021 school year. All of our students, with the exception of our kindergartners, have been out of our buildings prior to Monday of this week, for some since March of last school year. And I have learned, most importantly to me, and most recently yesterday, from our science and health experts at the local level, that our percent positivity rate is hovering between 2% and 2.5% in Buncombe County, down from a level of just above 3% at our September 10th meeting, and from a level at or just above 5% in late July, early August. We made our initial decision in late July, early August to go to the Plan B beyond to start the school year, largely based upon that information. That was the best information and science we had at the time. I also learned, after Mr. Queen asked a, a question yesterday, that the county health professionals did not have a recommendation for additional things we could do in our school buildings to create more safety and mitigate risk. I've also learned and read the release from the governor's office that Dr. Baldwin read tonight, so I'm not going to read it again. I appreciate you taking the time to do that. I had it here as well. I believe it's important for us as a board to remember, we cannot eliminate all risk for this or other bad things that can happen in our schools. I wish we could. I wish we could. We can work diligently, always, and I feel that we do, to mitigate the risk as much as we can. I, and most importantly, the local health professionals, seem to feel that we've done and are doing so in Buncombe County schools related to COVID-19. Having said all of this, I would now like to formally move that effective Monday, October 26th, Buncombe County Schools move to Plan A for all K-5 students under the criteria laid out by the state of North Carolina and the governor's office. And that beginning October 19th, our 9th through 13th grade students return to campuses on a full rotational AB schedule that we are currently now operating in, K-8. This is my standalone motion. I respectfully ask, as a board, to debate the merits of the motion as, in full, if it gets a second. And if you do not support it, to simply vote it down. And if you support it, to vote for it without cumbersome and confusing, confusing addendums to the motion. I want to explain a little bit my rationale on the dates, where I came to those. They're different from what Dr. Baldwin and staff have recommended, and I think it's appropriate for me to say why, what I was thinking. The K-5 recommendation would have had four weeks of AB for us to plan and also determine we should or should not move forward. We have been planning since last school year in many capacities for a move to a Plan A version as we knew it possibly could happen at some point. If the science, for example, two or three weeks from now, clearly indicates we are not ready for a Plan, Plan A move, we can easily revert to what we're doing now at Plan B, and I'll be the first to hold my hand up and say, "The data says we shouldn't do it." And I'll be right there moving that we stay with where we are, not moving all those students into Plan A, K-5. The date for the high schools to go to an AB schedule is the same amount of time from our September 10th meeting, when we voted to go to an AB schedule, to when the adjusted AB schedule was implemented on September the 28th. Eighteen days. The feedback was clear in our work session yesterday that to this point, and I know it's a short amount of time, but to this point, in those schools that had gone to an AB schedule, that it had gone so far very well. Lastly, regardless of whether you support the motion or some other, if we are going to consider any changes in the future of this first semester, we need to make a decision tonight, regardless of how long it takes, to be fair to Dr. Baldwin and his staff, all employees and students' families of Buncombe County moving forward. If we do not, and I were a BCS principal, and we weren't going to do anything until our November meeting, I would do no planning until at least that date, which I believe is November 5th. I think we owe it to the people of this community if we choose to make a change to do it tonight. Lastly, I fully get what I'm doing here. I understand the motion. I also believe strongly that we have the best people in the state of North Carolina in Buncombe County schools, and that we can not only do this, but that we can do it well. I thank you, Madam Chair. I'll yield back. I have taken the liberty of the motion that I made. If it were to get a second, I'd have typed it up so that it could be distributed to board members and Ms. Matthews, Dr. Baldwin, et cetera, if it gets a second for discussion. I'm happy to give that out if it gets a second. Thank you.
Could you give it out even if it doesn't give us, get a second?
Yeah, yeah, I just didn't want to take time from it if it didn't get a second. I, I, yeah, but I'm happy to, I'm happy to give it out right now.
I believe that would be a good thing.
So I would like to know.
Madam Chair, if you would, if you would like, I'm happy to read it again, or?
I just need people an opportunity to.
It might be helpful for the folks at home that you read that again, Mr. Bryant.
Would you like for me to do that now?
Yes, please.
I'll take the mask down just for a second. Effective Monday, October 26th, Buncombe County Schools move to Plan A for all K-5 students under the criteria laid out by the state of North Carolina and the governor's office. And that beginning on October 19th, our 9th through 13th grade students return to campuses on a full rotational AB schedule that we are currently in now in K-8.
The motion's looking for a second?
I'll allow for a second. I'll second that motion for discussion.
Okay. So Churchill's going to second.
Yes.
And now we can discuss.
I don't think I can add anything, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna discuss.
Madam Chair, I, I'd like to start some discussion. I, I understand where Mr. Bryant is coming with this, this motion. I especially appreciate him wanting to get our 9th through 13th grades back into the building. I do have some concerns about including the fifth grade students in our A, Plan A, for the reasons that were laid out, particularly our bus situation. I'm not sure if it would be appropriate to, you know, continue having a little bit more conversation with that, with asking any more specific questions that might make it easier to, to go with a K-5, or do you, I mean, are we kind of just where we're at with it?
I, I, I'm where I am with it. I've spent the better part of the last three days writing this and coming up with these thoughts, and, and this is where I am. And I, I, I understand if we go through 14 motions today and don't do anything because they all get voted down. I understand that. I also understand that there's a possibility that, that people may think this makes sense, and this is a good way to go. For me, the K to 5, the, the difference on K-4 versus K-5 for me was, my goal is to get as many kids into the building as we can, as many days as we can. And the governor's status and the governor's recommendation, and, and the health people at the state level's recommendation is that K-5, that can be done. If, if we go K-4, we have two districts that, while it may not impact our buses, we've got two districts that the fifth graders will be in that building on an AB schedule, while K-4 is on an A schedule, not an AB schedule, a B schedule, which is an A day, B day, and the K-4 will be on A. For me, it was simply a matter of where I try to base all of my decisions, and I don't get them all right, but what's best for the most kids? And that's for me why K-5 versus K-4. There's some lag time there, and, and Dr. Baldwin could come to us in two weeks and go, "We can't do it. The buses are not going to allow us to do it." Right now, we're speculating, I think, as to whether we can make that happen or not.
You want to speak to that, Dr. Baldwin?
I'm just asking Mr. Hope to speak to it because he's, he's done a lot of that research and looked at numbers and respecificed the buses.
Certainly.
Can you hear me? Taking my mask? Can you hear me now? In talking with David Roney, Director of Transportation, and in light of the, the situation with the intermediate schools, that's where it provides the most difficulty. And the research into it really does show that it's, I hesitate to say virtually impossible, but we're, we would be looking at bus drivers, and the HSSAs on those buses are the most critical areas. So that's the research really that I give to you, is coming from the Director of Transportation, David Roney and his staff.
Can we do it or not do it? What has he said, or has he made that call yet? I understand that, that some work would have to be done. I get that. But, but have we gotten to a point where we know for sure that we think we could or couldn't do it?
On the words of David Roney and the Director of Transportation, that, that is good enough for me.
I, I don't understand what you said, Mr. Hope.
I don't either.
Here again, like I said, it's, we, each, a lot of our schools are, already have bus drivers shortages. What some of them are already doing is because of the numbers where they are, I, I think we said anywhere, right now, we're looking at, at 10 on a, on a bus with one per seat, 22. But some of the schools already, and one of them in your district, is already combining buses. They've got six buses, and in order to just get those buses going, there are actually combining buses now so that one driver can act as the HSA and the other a driver. So that's the kind of, of, you know, trouble that we're having, just basically having, being able to put a driver on every bus with the need. And so going full capacity is, is definitely going to multiply that even beyond, and here again, I also add that the recommendation under Plan A, even though it is not required for, for one per seat, they come, they did say in the wording, highly recommended, because just the nature of the COVID virus that's still out there and sitting side by side in a seat. So we would still do, do the best we can to provide that safety with one per seat, even under Plan A, to the best of our ability. And it may be that, you know, we, we do use that highly, under Plan A, that we can sit a few more, but I would hope that we could, we would only have to sit maybe five of those seats or so. And then hopefully, as the parents and the students feel comfortable sitting, you know, to the seat with that highly recommended under Plan A. So it, it really is going back to the guidance that's given to us by the state with our current situation with any bus driver shortage. And, and I'll tell you, if board members that have, have been with us for a long time, it seems like we have a bus driver shortage every year. And it's everything that we can do to come up with different things to offer so that we can get more people to, to drive the buses. But right now, just hearing from a couple of the principals, like the one that we talked to yesterday, that in order just to make it work in our current plan, they are basically combining buses so that they have the drivers that they need just to drive three and have that HSA. So here again, I go back to, and not only David Roney and the Director of Transportation, but what the principals are telling us as well. I, I hesitated a minute ago because I, I would love to have just give you a paper empirical data of each school, but I, I don't have that. But I do have the words that have come from the principals and from the Director of Transportation.
Could you?
Can I just clarify? There was one thing I didn't understand there. It was my understanding that with sixth graders on the bus, we did not have the option that if sixth graders are on the bus, we are under a Plan B bus situation. Is that correct?
That's exactly right.
Cannot add more kids. And, and so what I heard yesterday was it would put us in the situation of having to run, like, your fifth load or your sixth load. You know, my, my kids were occasionally second load, and so they would get home later. But we would be having to do multiple loads on the same bus and sanitize in between. Is that correct?
Man, that's a good point to, to bring, and that is directed by the state. So anytime you have a combination, and we do, between some high, high school, middle schools, and then intermediates and middle, you're going to run into those combinations where you have five, six. So you no longer will have that highly recommended in that case. You are going to be restricted to one per seat.
And, and Mr. Hope, could you, I think we all know, but there may be some folks who are, who are watching and listening, can you tell us just the basic nature of what HSA is? Or rather, not us, but the public, what does that mean and what is actually going on on those buses so that they understand what that is?
Yes, sir. Health and, health and safety assistant, and primarily, they, their duty is to take those temperatures of the student right before they get onto the bus. That way, the driver can be solely focused on the safety of managing the bus.
And I know we all know it, but just, just, I just was asking that for the public so that, so that the public has that as well.
Just if I could add one thing, we got to remember that we're bringing high school students back, and, and we support that, by the way. But by bringing them back, we're now taking those high school drivers. And currently, those high school drivers are a part of what we're using in order to be Plan B's transportation of K-5 successful or K-8 successful. So we got to keep that in mind. We will certainly bring, Ms. Bryant, I think you, you recommended this, we can crunch the data, get numbers back to you, but I would caution the board that there needs to be some, if this is voted, there does need to be some backup plan because in my opinion, there's a good chance to come back and say, for transportation purposes, purposes alone for the intermediate schools, this can't work. We just cannot do this. And this is echoed across the state, by the way, at our past two superintendent meetings, Zoom meetings, which included the entire state. This is a significant issue. And we have asked for some, for schools, a number of schools, older schools, especially in the eastern part of the state, they have K-8 in the building. So if you put K-8 on the bus, you're back into, regardless of who's in A and who's in B, you're under the restrictions of one per. in B, you're under the restrictions of one per seat. This is a...this again is an example of where we have some disjoint between the plan and the actual ability to make it happen. So in all honesty, we would have to say, we can bring that information, and we can crunch it and pull numbers, so you actually see, based on what we currently have. But again, change, don't forget that. Remember that once we announce the return, and especially if there are additional days, there could certainly be a desire from parents that are currently remote only to request this. So this brings another angle, another issue that we've got to be able to face. So again, we support all of this wholeheartedly. That's what we brought to you. But in all honesty, this is a key issue.
Thank you.
Mr. Queen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I served as a board representative on the Auxiliary and Operations Subcommittee, and I was involved in every meeting, and I want to read to you what Mr. Roney said as presentation during the follow-up after all of the dust sort of settled. Mr. Roney, who's Director of Transportation, said, "We're in good shape for Plan B." They worked hard, his staff, the ladies who do the scheduling and the routing, said they worked 67 hours a week to complete that and do it on a timely basis, so I want to recognize them for their hard work. But getting to the question here, I think this, in Mr. Roney's own words, he states, "Under Plan A, K through 5 can seat students as normal." That's three to a seat. You can fill the bus if you're under Plan A. However, goes further to say, "It is strongly recommended that if we attend school under Plan A, we remain under Plan B for transportation. It is a requirement that if we intermingle any grade above 5, we must operate the bus under Plan B. This affects West Buncombe, Eblin, North Buncombe Middle School, Valley Spring, Coontz, Inca Intermediate, and North Windy Ridge." These schools can, in that situation, can only ride one to a seat, one person to a seat. And he also goes further to say that if we go to A Plan five days per week, he predicts the ridership will go up. And also going further with that, he's concerned that under Plan A, car rider lines will cause bus ridership to go up due to long wait. So he anticipates, as people start getting into it, if we went to Plan A and got into a comfort zone, they might start putting their students back on the bus more, and that would increase the numbers of times, maybe splitting a route and putting more buses on the road and that kind of thing. So I hope this helps to shed some light on that question, but that's directly from Mr. Roney.
I have problems. Actually, Mr. Bryant's motion to me has many segments that need to be discussed. And since we're on this K-5 situation, that's the one I'm going to take. Right now, I have some comments about some of the other pieces of it as well. I understand that because of the configuration of our intermediate schools, that that is one configuration, and because Owen and Reynolds don't have an intermediate school, that's another configuration. So from our K-5 perspective, I cannot figure out how to effectively run a school of 700 students, and I'm guessing 700, I don't know, for a number of students, half of it one way and half of it another. I don't think that's...I don't think it's right. I don't think it's fair to the teachers. I don't think it's fair to the students, because if you've got a 5th grader, it's just not. Because if you've got a set of kids that can operate one way, and then they look over here, and this other set of students can operate another way academically, in the hallway, all of that, it's just a mystery to me how that might look. In regards to Owen and Reynolds, and respectively, those students deserve the same education. I believe that 5th graders would get standard course of study, basic content, all of the instruction that they deserve and would get at a 5, 6 school, even though that configuration is different. So I would have...I would be... Please. If we could look at K-4 and take 5th grade out of the equation.
If I may, Madam Chair, may I also add to that? It seems that when we were in the meetings and we heard from the principals yesterday, every principal that had that kind of division in their school, I kept hearing, "Make our school whole," meaning that the intermediate school would prefer...they're not saying they couldn't do it, but would prefer having the 5th and 6th grade in simultaneously, all meeting for the day. And I heard the same thing coming from the elementary schools as well. So that is a concern of our...that I heard from the principals.
Yes, it was loud and clear yesterday.
Yes.
One recommendation we heard from the Curriculum Subcommittee earlier on was that for the districts where there aren't intermediate schools, the elementary schools could remain whole, and in the districts where there are intermediate schools, the intermediate schools could remain whole. And that we would not be required to do this...we could do it based on the kind of school rather than the grades.
Yes.
And in that sense, although again, there are no win-wins here, but at least then we would be keeping all the schools whole. And if we talk about the number of intermediate schools, I think I heard there were four intermediate schools, and there are four elementary schools just in my district. So if we're talking about the numbers of elementary schools, there are far more elementary schools that are K-5 than there are intermediate schools. And so personally, I would be more comfortable with this if we were talking about going back to that recommendation from that Subcommittee, where the elementary schools can remain whole, and the intermediate schools can also remain whole, and treat all their students in the same way in both kinds of schools.
Madam Chair, if I may add something to Ms. McMahon's comment. Inka District, we also have four elementary schools, but they're feeding their 5th grade into the intermediate.
Right.
So it's...I just wanted to make sure that was...
Well, that's true, North Buncombe, Irwin. It's true in any district that has a K-5 school.
Right.
That's true.
Either way, Madam Chair, we're not going to make all those schools whole. If we're K-4, in the Reynolds and the Owen District, those elementary schools are not whole. Those 5th graders will be on Plan B and an A-B schedule.
Exactly, and that's why I was suggesting that I would be...can't see you, sorry.
I can hear you. You're over there somewhere, I can hear you.
That if...that's why I was suggesting that if we could treat the K-5 elementaries different from the districts where there are K-4 schools and intermediates.
So your thought...to make sure I understand, your thought then was, in the Owen and the Reynolds District, the K through 5 elementary schools, all of those students would be Plan A.
Right.
And in the other four districts that have the intermediate schools?
We would do K-4.
We would do K through 4.
Right, which was the recommendation that we heard earlier. The other thing, if I can just address the other piece of this motion that I have a concern with, is I could be comfortable with sending high schoolers back October 26th. I feel like doing it at the same date would provide both consistency and also in those homes where the high schoolers might now be helping with taking care of their younger children, if we could send them back at the same time, that's going to ease some of that crunch for those families as opposed to sending the high schoolers back a week ahead. So if they...for my own vote, I would be more comfortable with them all going back on October 26th rather than two separate weeks.
Well, why don't we just confuse the issue here?
I could wrap my head around doing it, them all, October 26th, and having them back at that point.
Ms. McMahon, it's what I'm hearing you say, that you would be comfortable with Mr. Bryant's recommendation if both dates were the 26th, and the school districts that have intermediate schools treat their students as intermediate, and then the elementary school, those two districts, treat...keep the schools whole, basically.
Right.
And you'd be comfortable with that?
I would. Wouldn't it be easier to vote this...on this motion?
Yeah, and I would...before we start trying to change, I would respectfully ask, Madam Chair, discussion may not be done, but I would respectfully ask that the motion remain as it is, and if it gets voted down, I can live with that, and I think all of us can live with that. And if somebody has another motion that they then want to make that leads to more discussion, maybe it gets voted up, maybe it gets voted down, maybe there's another, and I don't know how many. I just think...I think we, as a board, went through a meeting where we confused the public a lot with what we did with addendum, et cetera, and I would just prefer us not to do that again, whether this gets voted up or down.
Which is exactly why I'm saying now what I'm comfortable with, as opposed to us getting tangled up in Robert's Rules of Order again.
Perfect.
And so I just want to be transparent...
Perfect.
...with the pieces of this motion that I have a hard time with, and what I could be comfortable with. I'm trying to be as clear as I perfectly can.
Right, and you've given us a lot...a certain springboard here to discuss. So maybe, Mr. Attorney, should I call for the vote and see what it does, and then maybe another motion would emerge?
If this fails, yeah, and if everyone is to the point where they have no more comments on this particular motion, and feels comfortable taking a vote, I do think we should read the motion again for our folks at home.
So may I ask, the motion that's on the floor can't be altered?
It can be, Mr. Queen.
Can be.
Yes, sir, it can be.
The only thing I would like to say is that I think there's apparently some common ground here, and I think that going back to no more confusion, and even changing, you know, the different dates here, I want to get these kids back, you know, as soon as we can. But let's be practical, everything we heard from the faculty, the principals, they need time to ramp up to get there. And I think we're being fair, and we're hearing what Dr. Baldwin presented as well, and it's really an acceptance of your plan, Dr. Baldwin, with some tweaking there, a little tweaking going on. But I think we need to be consistent, and that's why, when I think about it, I certainly appreciate, Pat, your position. I appreciate your position, Ms. McMahon, but I think what it does, and your suggestion is that we're being consistent, on one date, everything starts, everything goes, high school, across the board, it's just one smooth move. And you're not having to worry, as Ms. McMahon pointed out, if you've got high school students who have been taking care of the small ones or whatever, and you get them on different schedules, that just seems like it's confusing the parents again. So with that said, I would urge that we, if this is the decision of the board, that we come together, make one vote, if you're willing to accept modification, Mr. Bryant. If not, we'll go down the other road.
I would prefer not to, and there's another difference that I don't think anybody's touched on that was different than Dr. Baldwin's. My recommendation for K through 5 is Monday through Friday. It's not that Wednesday day that you recommended. So if the pleasure of the board is that that is something that's important, that's not part of this motion. If the pleasure of the board is that that's the way we ought to go, then it ought to be voted down and something else be presented.
I actually have a comment specifically about the leaving schools whole and whether we were to do K-4, K-5. Being that I am the Robertson representative, and I share a school with the Reynolds representative, this brings a problem, again, back into the spotlight of things that we've often looked at when we discuss the one middle school that we share. If we were to leave schools whole and let the intermediate 5, 6 stay on Plan B, and the K-5 schools go into a Plan A, what happens is that the kids that are currently at Fairview Elementary, 5th grade, would have in-person A instruction. And what would happen at Coontz Intermediate is they would remain on the Plan B, which is two days' instruction. And I can't...and again, this time next year, you could easily find them all in Kane Creek together in 6th grade, if we allow Schedule C. Certainly, half of them, and I left out Glennard, so whenever I talk about this, I just think of this giant spider arm everywhere, but you basically have one group of kids that's going to be meeting up with another group of kids that had in-person instruction. And to me, that is not fair at all, and not something that I'd be willing to support.
Okay.
That makes sense, too.
Yeah.
That's the problem with this time.
Are you ready to vote on the motion?
I think I am, and we...
If I can read the motion, just so everybody at home knows what we're voting on, and board members, too. And thank you, Mr. Bryant, for clarifying the Monday through Friday. I think that's a pretty significant clarification. Effective Monday, October 26, Buncombe County Schools move to Plan A for all K-5 students under the criteria laid out by the State of North Carolina and the Governor's Office, and that beginning October 19th, our 9th through 13th grade students return to campuses on a full rotational A-B schedule that we are currently in now in K-8.
Excuse the poor grammar there at the end of that last sentence. That was poorly done. It looked a lot better on paper than hearing it come out of your mouth. My apologies.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. We have had discussion, and we...at this time, I am requesting that we vote on this motion. I'm going to call your name. Is that bad?
No, I think that's probably the best way to go for this, so that we're clear about who voted for what.
Okay, Peggy?
No.
No. Pat?
Yes.
Okay, just a minute, I'm having to write your names down. Donna?
No.
Okay. Amy?
No.
Bax?
No.
No.
Anna Anne's no. All right. At this time, I want to thank you for giving us this springboard to discuss.
Absolutely.
And so what I would like to do, I don't have a motion, what I'd like to do, and I can create a motion, is take it in pieces, so that we can focus on one thing at a time. And since we started on K-5, which may be the most difficult piece, I would suggest that we discuss K-5, and you've got K-4 or K-5. I guess I'm getting myself into I'm going to have to write a motion, huh?
Maybe.
Well, unless somebody else has one that...
Madam Chair, I would make a motion that...
Okay, speak so Kim can get it back there for me, please.
Yes, okay. I move, want to make sure I have my words correctly, that effective October 26, Buncombe County Schools move to Plan A for all K-5 students in the Reynolds and Owen Districts, so that we keep those elementary schools whole, and K-4 students in the other districts.
Could I get you to take that date out of there, and when you make the motion, and just address the K-5 situation? Would you be willing to do that?
Sure.
Okay, would you repeat that, please?
Okay. I move that as of an unspecified date, that we will decide, I guess, in a different motion.
Yes. Yes.
Why am I taking out the date? Okay. For issue. Leave it the way it is. I think we can, we can go with this date that Pat has suggested for move to Plan A, K five in those two districts that do not have intermediate schools, K four in the districts that do have intermediate schools, Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I read that, to make sure?
You can try.
Effective October 26th, Buncombe County Schools moves to Plan A for grades K through five for the Reynolds and Owen districts and K through four in the other districts, and this would be five days, Monday through Friday, under Plan A.
Do you have a second?
I don't know.
I'll second it.
Okay, Max has seconded, Mr. Queen has seconded. All right, we're ready for discussion.
I'd like to speak to that again. So, again, for the reasons that I spoke, I would not want to support that because of Kane Creek specifically and the Glennard district kids that flow through Coons. And also, I have some real strong concerns going five days a week for many reasons. I have actually a lot of concerns of putting our K four, five, or whatever into a Plan A right now, but I'll leave to why I have concerns for five days. I think it is extremely important to have that one day a week for the deep cleaning that we keep saying that we're going to, to do, and, and I think in order for it to be effective, it's got to be an all-day, no kids in the building, deep clean, and we have to make sure, and I'm not even sure what this looks like, but we have to make sure that each and every school is following those cleaning procedures to a T, and I don't know if that means somebody from the central office drives out and inspects them, I don't know if that's the principal that goes through and inspects them and signs off on some papers, but we absolutely have to make sure that if we have all these kids in these classrooms, that we are following those strict safety and cleaning guides. So for that reason, I would not be able to support that.
I'm open to that Wednesday thing as a friendly amendment, if that's okay with you, Max.
I would agree.
No?
There's no friendly amendment.
Can't, can't have a friendly amendment.
Friendly is what he's saying.
No, I'm just saying there's no such thing as a friendly amendment. We're going to have to do this right.
So, okay, so we would have to vote on that?
The motion's been seconded, right?
Yes.
So the motion now belongs to the body.
Okay.
All right.
I call a question.
So I'm going to call for the vote.
Appropriately call the question then.
I think the Madam Chair is about ready to do it.
Yeah, I'm about ready to do that, yeah.
The clarification question.
Sure.
So if we go Monday through Friday, are we saying that this is going to be all day, no early dismissal either?
I didn't, I heard Monday through Friday.
That was not part of the motion.
Okay.
So.
So that's something we'll have to discuss later.
Yeah.
As I've understood, Mr. Shatley, we cannot take Wednesday out of that motion, is that correct?
That's what he's saying.
Okay.
Without an amendment.
I thought you weren't allowing amendments.
Yeah, we have a real amendment, but not a friendly amendment.
We can have a hateful amendment here.
Amy's not going to vote for this one anyway because of the other issues, so why don't we just call the vote?
Okay, we'll vote up or down on what Mr. Shatley has read, which is Monday through Friday, K five, Plan A, is that correct?
Starting October 26th.
And only K five for Reynolds and Owen and K four for the districts that have intermediate schools.
Yes.
Are we clear?
Yes.
All right. Peggy?
No.
Pat?
No.
Donna?
No.
Max?
You skipped Amy.
Sorry, Amy?
No.
Yes.
You're a yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we have one yes and all the rest are no, I'm a no. All right, let's move on.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Certainly.
I move that we leave K eight in Plan B until the end of the semester, but that we move our ninth through 13th, I have to get used to saying that, into Plan B, beginning with October the 19th, which is the beginning of a new nine-week period.
All right, let me repeat what I think I heard you say.
Sure.
Your motion is to keep K eight in Plan B and nine thirteen in Plan B, beginning October 19th.
That is correct.
Okay, now I think I left out a little phrase here, K eight in Plan B through the end of the semester.
Correct, sorry, yes, yes.
And then nine through 13 in B, beginning October 19th through the end of the semester.
That is correct.
Okay.
Barring any changes with the numbers in the county.
The COVID or whatever.
There you go.
I'll second that motion. So is there discussion?
I'd like to kind of explain my reasons why, because I think this is some discussion that we definitely need to have. It's not that I don't want the kids in the building, and I know that right now, parents are probably watching and pulling their hair out. The concerns that I have, because if I think of myself as a parent of one child, I would be right there with those other parents saying, I'm okay with letting my kid into the building, I want them into Plan A. So I do understand their reasonings behind it, because I could also have done that. My daughter just graduated in 2019, so it's not been that long that I've had a kid in the school system. But I actually am responsible for making decisions for about 24,000 kids, that's an awful lot of kids, and what I heard from our health panel was that while, yes, we are doing everything that we can and that they could not really think of anything else that we could be doing differently, one of those things that we are currently doing is practicing one of those very big Ws, and that is maintaining our six-foot distance. That cannot be done in a Plan A. I just think we have to have a lot more time to make sure that our Plan B is truly going to be the safest, safest plan. And I guess I'm just saying the end of the semester because that's, because there is flu season, there is lots of changes. I think we've heard loud and clear, we got to make a decision and stick with it unless, again, Corona steps in. But those are my reasons for, for making the motion that I've made.
Other comments or questions?
Madam Chair, I have one, one question, more for Mr. Shatley, and, because we've gotten into some of the, the question was asked on Ms. McMahon's motion about, is that an early release and those types of things? Can, can we, Mr. Shatley, stay at the 30,000-foot level and pass a broad motion, and if the superintendent and his staff feel that K through five with an hour or a 30-minute or an hour and a half early release is the best way to go for all the educational reasons that they're going to have a better grasp of, and just instruct them to carry out the dates, but implement those dates in the best way they see moving forward for the kids, whether it's a one-hour early release or a Wednesday is off, etc., or do we need to get to all of those details?
No, I think you can leave it at 30,000 feet, especially for the, the time and the early release and, and those, those sorts of issues. I would say if, you know, kind of going back to your original motion and even Ms. McMahon's motion, if you are interested in the five days a week or the four days a week, I would be very explicit about that.
Certainly.
In any motion and in your debate. But I think the timing and, and those sorts of ideas, certainly leaving it to administration is fine, and they can bring back to you what they intend to do in order, and why they would make that work, and if you didn't like that, you could certainly do something about it, but, but you can leave it up to administration.
I just wanted to clarify, I wasn't sure, thank you.
Okay, when we talk about Plan B, Plan B is.
What we're currently in.
Two days, two days and Wednesday off, is that correct?
That is correct, that is what we're currently operating in now, right?
Correct, I just wanted to.
No, no, I just, yeah, I was going to say, I'm saying that to repeat for myself also.
I feel like I'm R2D2 up here. So.
And then I just realized, actually, that I didn't really go into my reasons for high school coming back in again, but we could circle back around to that at some point.
So if, if I, Mr. Shatley, want to vote on this amendment, and then I want, in a future, could I, to a future amendment, and change the date?
So.
By voting on this, am I bound on October the 19th, or can I make another motion to change the date?
So, I would, I don't think we want to make it that complicated. So this is a motion, it's, it's not an amendment, just to be clear. If, if you vote on this, I think.
I'm bound by it.
You are bound by it until we come back to another meeting and you provide previous notice of a potential change. So I, I would, you've got two options. If you don't agree with the full motion, you can either vote it down, or you can move to amend it, and that, that amendment would require a second debate and a full vote. Again, there's no friendly amendment. I would suggest that we not have any amendments to an amendment like we did last time. I think that's where, I think that's where it got very confusing, but you could, either, again, you could either move to amend, which would require a second debate and a vote, or you could just simply vote on this, and if you don't like the entire motion, you can vote it down or vote for it.
Okay, can I clarify one thing, because I think this might be what's getting kind of confusing. I've heard a couple of times that this has been referred to as an amendment, but I thought I was making a motion.
No, this is a motion.
That's what I said. So I've made an emotion, so if there was to be a change in the date, there would not be an amendment on an amendment, there would still be that one amendment.
Yes, ma'am.
That you suggested.
Yes, so.
On a motion.
So for, for instance, I think you, the only, the only date you have here is October 19th.
That is correct.
So I'm just going to do something hypothetically here, because I can't make a motion, so a, a potential amendment could be, I move to, or I move to amend the motion by striking October 19th and inserting October 26th, or any other date that you want to put in there, but that would be the motion to amend the date.
Okay, do we have further discussion on the motion that's on the floor?
I would like the motion reread before we vote.
Yes, sir.
Sure you would.
Thank you.
The, the motion is to, and Ms. Churchill, please correct me if I get anything wrong, leave grades K eight in Plan B until the end of the semester and move grades nine through 13 into Plan B on October the 19th.
That is correct.
Now, now's the time for me to amend this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
If you want to, if that's what you would like to do.
I'd like to amend your motion, and I think I'm saying motion and not emotion. I, I heard from our staff and teachers about the need to have, to be in a situation long enough to figure, figure it out and get it going smoothly, and I believe that October the 19th, I haven't done the counting, might be a little bit too soon, and I would like to ask that we look at November 9, which is, if I'm correct, is about six weeks in the situation that we're in right now? Am I correct, Ms. Wagner? Okay. And that giving people, even tonight, you heard, please give us time to simulate what's going on and practice and let the students get a rhythm. So that would be my reason for amending the date in Ms. Churchill's motion to November 9.
And the portion of that, Mr. Shatley, that she's amending is referencing.
Nine through 13, I assume.
Nine through 13 back only, correct? That's all that that's referencing.
Let me, let me see if I have the intent of your amendment correct, Ms. Franklin. You are amending move grades nine through 13 in Plan B on October 19th by striking October 19th and inserting November 9th. You are not making any change to leave K eight in Plan B until the end of the semester.
For them both to be November 9. I did not necessarily state that, but could, could I do that?
The.
For simplicity reasons.
The.
That K eight.
K eight in Plan B until November 9th?
No, because we're already.
We're already in Plan B for K through eight.
Already in?
Yeah.
Okay, then no. Okay, so now that I have confused myself and probably other members in, in this room, I need a second to my motion. Thank you. So now there is discussion.
Discussion is just on the date change.
Right. And my rationale was that we need a little bit more time for people to, our, our staff and our students to adjust to where they are, and.
So, again, to clarify, we are just voting now on amending the, the motion, we are not voting on the motion, is that correct?
That is correct. You will be voting on whether to change October 19th to November 9th and how it regards grades nine through 13.
Okay, so I have, is there discussion?
So to clarify, October 19th date versus, versus November the 9th.
October 9th, correct.
We've been in, we've been in Plan C for our high school students since mid-August, correct?
Yes.
And so what is it we're looking to see from now going forward, or from that date to November the 9th, that's going to be different for us to look at? I'm, I'm not following.
I was merely thinking about what we heard yesterday and how they needed, that they'd just been.
Well, we've just gone to Plan B, that's what I heard them, I thought I heard them say, was we've just gone to Plan B, and before you take Plan B to Plan A, we need more time. I don't.
They need time in any situation that they're in, which is why I, I asked for November 9th, six weeks into this.
Right, and I can appreciate your November 9th, I would not be opposed to that. I will say that I've spoken to high school principals here just in the last couple of days, and there's been a lot of concerns. Now, a lot of them actually have gone from, you know, thinking that staying remote for the semester was, was the best choice, to recognizing with the uptick in mental health issues that we're currently experiencing, an uptick in reports of suicidal talk on our, on our app, or suicidal talk amongst our high school students at several of our high schools, and feelings of hopelessness and loneliness, and I think we even, you know, some of the students even touched on that a little bit, that what I've been told is the sooner the better, because I got to tell you, the October 19th kind of surprised me, too. But I, I could be okay with November 9th, but again, this brings me back to why I want high school back in, why I think it's so important, because I understand all about the groove, I understand about not making a lot of changes, about the level of instruction, how difficult it is to try to teach remote and in-person at the same time. Those are all details that I, I think our administrators and our teachers will have to figure out, and a lot of them are already figuring that out, and, but the number one safety for me is when I start hearing kids talking about giving up because of this, that's a game changer. I, I can't, I can't take the risk of a child taking their life that we might have been able to help intervene if they had been in a building where trained professionals can spot changes, or maybe a friend doesn't feel comfortable doing something on the app but would say something in person. I, I, that scares me more than a virus, to tell you the truth. And, you know, I'm seeing, it's, we're, in healthcare, we're seeing an uptick in emotional issues going on with our adults, and they have fully formed brains, so we're talking about children, their brains aren't fully developed, and I think, I'm going to get personal here, I think about. I think about, not long ago, just a few weeks ago, I got to the point where, I'll be real here, I'm probably going to regret it tomorrow, but I actually was just melted puddle on the floor in my house because I just thought, "I just can't do this anymore." I'm not even sure what this was, other than I think it was just 24/7 Corona talk practically in my life. And so there I was, right? Puddle on the floor. Nobody else there. But my, fortunately, my 49 years on this planet has taught me that, yeah, you can. You can get through whatever this is. And so you pick yourself up, which is what I did, and, you know, had a nice, long, good cry, but at the end of the day, it was like, "Okay, you got to move on, Amy." But that was my almost 50-year-old brain. I can tell you that my 14-year-old brain absolutely would not have thought that way. I can tell you that 100%, had I been a 14-year-old child in a puddle on a floor, sobbing and thinking, "I can't do this anymore," and nobody was around, and I had access, the brains just, they're just not developed. And it's so difficult right now. And if somebody who, you know, is, if an adult is feeling that way, and I know I'm not the only one, then I know that our kids are feeling that way, too. So I think we just have to really take that into consideration. And I'm sorry for taking up more time, but I just really think we need to make sure that we understand the mental health piece in all of this.
And we do. And you have focused us on that. So if there's no more discussion, then I'll call for a vote on my amendment.
I have another comment that I would like to make on the larger motion, and I just want to make sure that I'm going to have an opportunity to make that comment.
Yes, ma'am.
So I don't need to make it now if I'm going to have another chance.
Correct.
But I want to make sure it's not lost.
Yep.
Okay, I'm going to do it by name call. Peggy?
Yes.
Yes. Pat?
No.
Donna?
No.
Max?
You skipped Amy again.
I put you down here at the bottom. Amy?
No.
And Cindy?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm a yes. So that's 4-3, sorry?
4-3, no.
4-3 fails.
Main motion is unamended and is now on the floor for further debate, and that is to leave grades K through 8 in Plan B until the end of the semester, move grades 9 through 13 into Plan B on October the 19th.
Okay, so we...
So I...
Just a minute, let me make sure I've done what I'm supposed to do. We have a motion, we have a second, and now we're in discussion of that motion. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So I just want to be clear that I can't support this motion because I sat here yesterday and listened to Dr. Jackson, who is not only in my district at Fairview Elementary, but also at one of our largest, most crowded elementary schools. And I heard her say, "We want our kids back in the building. We're not ready yet, but we can get there." And when pressed on, "How soon could you get there?", she said November 9th. And I, I feel like if there's any way for us to get the hybrid instruction that we're in, where, while it's better than nothing in some cases, it's just not the same as four or five days a week of having the kids in there. And if she, Dr. Jackson, believes that it can be done, I, she's the expert at Fairview Elementary, and I believe her. So while I am to the point now that I could, if we were doing these motions separately, as I had hoped we would, I could certainly support the high school piece of this and giving ourselves a little bit of time to get ready and then bringing the high schoolers back in, I feel like I'm to the point of supporting that now. But I cannot vote to keep our K-5 kids, or our K-4 kids, or whatever we can agree on. I can't be comfortable with leaving them in hybrid mode if we have the opportunity to bring them back.
So would you like to make a motion, an amendment to the motion to separate those two?
No, you couldn't amend it that way.
Okay. How can she amend it?
May I have one clarification? Did I understand your motion to be K-8 remaining in Plan B?
Yes, and again, the reason for that is, I too have heard from elementary, well, K-8, that they want their kids back into the building, too. And the one thing that I did hear, though, was that they could not ensure that every one of their classes could abide by what is still highly, highly recommended, to give us the best shot of not spreading any kind of virus. They couldn't, they couldn't say that they could do it. In fact, they said they absolutely could not do it. They could not provide six-foot spacing in every one of their classes.
And I'm not proposing to amend this motion. I think that's an important part of Amy's motion, and I don't want to, I'm just explaining what, that my vote is more about the K-5 part of it. And...
Against it even one second.
But if I understand correctly, we're currently in Plan B for K through 8. And what, basically, there would be no change that what is occurring right now for that group of students. And her motion would be to bring the high school students, 9 through 13, on board as of the, you said the 19th?
Yes.
That's correct. That's the motion. Yes, sir.
That's it.
So, and going back to Ms. Jackson's point, that was disturbing to me as well because she said her school is an older school, smaller class size, and that if we went to Plan A, she didn't know how she could possibly get the six-foot distancing. I think your motion is well-made, and I would support that.
Other comments? All right, we can vote. Could, can we read the motion?
Yes, yes, ma'am. So the motion is to leave grades K-8 in Plan B until the end of the semester and move grades 9 through 13 into Plan B on October the 19th.
Peggy? You want me calling you last? Cindy?
No.
Amy?
Yes.
Max?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Pat?
No.
Ann is no. And Peggy?
Yes.
Sorry?
Yes.
Yes. So I've messed up my count here.
Motion carries 4-3.
Motion carries 4-3.
Is it 4-3? Okay, the motion carries 4-3. Would you read it to us again, Mr. Shatley?
Yes, ma'am. So the motion was, as adopted, is to leave grades K through 8 in Plan B until the end of the semester, move grades K, excuse me, move grades 9 through 13 into Plan B on October the 19th.
Okay. So do we have other matters of discussion or motions that we need to take into consideration at this time? Seeing none, we will move to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. And on the consent agenda, we have the minutes from September 10, 2020, September 16, that's a regular meeting, September 16, 2020, special call meeting, the personnel report with an addendum, approval of the board training members' credits, policies for second reading, policy 3410, which is testing and assessments, 3460, graduation requirements, 4315, which is disruptive behavior, and 4316, which is student dress code, policy 4325, which is drugs and alcohol, 4600 student fees, policy 5050, emergency closings, policy 6325, parking areas for students, and policy 7241, drug and alcohol testing of commercial motor vehicle operators. And then we have a list of policies to be rescinded, and that's policy 310, news releases, policy 425, student fees, policy 430, student parking fees, policy 461, student sexual harassment, policy 472, alternative education, and policy 523, promotion of healthy foods and beverage standards. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? And a second?
Second.
Here.
Yes, sir.
I just want to point out to everybody that we are repealing policy 461, student sexual harassment, but that policy has been replaced with another sexual harassment policy. We're not getting rid of the sexual harassment policy in the district.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the next item on the agenda is the information agenda. We have a budget resource document and the finance report. Our next meeting will be November the 5th, 2020, with work session updates and closed sessions beginning at 4:00 in the Bo Ketcher Room, and open session will begin at 5:30 in the Minitorium. Could I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Madam Chair, one more point of business. I was looking as we started moving down, and I finally found the note. If I may, I would just like to mention one other item. There was a, tonight, we heard from a teacher from, let me get back to my note, she was from, she was from AC Reynolds, AC Reynolds. And she was talking about, and we don't, none of us have a crystal ball as to what's going to happen as we move forward here. But it seems, it seems what she said was very, very logical in that I think where we got into a lot of issues and really adding workload to our instructors, expecting them to teach face-to-face and virtual simultaneously, I think she made a good, a good point. And what she suggested was looking, and I think we have time now till next semester, and Dr. Bowen, I would ask you and your staff to respond, if I'm way off base here, please correct me, but what she was suggesting was, if we're going to continue the format of virtual and traditional classroom, would it be possible to identify virtual-only teachers and traditional-only teachers? Therefore, your virtual-only teachers are focused on those virtual students, and the traditional teachers, face-to-face instruction. And to me, it makes sense that it's not saddling a single teacher with two different populations to try to, to try to juggle. Is that possible?
The answer, is that possible? Yes. How to get there? Again, I go back to remind the board that the elementary school, the intermediate, middle, and the high school are all three different models.
Yes, sir, I understand.
So currently, at the elementary level, the model you just described, help me, Ms. Swanger, is read, is very common. When you get to, because again, you're talking grade levels and one teacher being able to teach multiple areas of the core. When you get to the high school level, it's a different curriculum in that it's very course-based. Along with that, different levels, honors, advanced, so it's much more difficult to do that. You're talking about a significant increase in staffing. It's much more complex. The theory, the thought, you're absolutely right, makes so much sense. It's just that the high school level, to be able to do that, is a monumental task from a staffing standpoint. And it would, it would cause immediately a significant increase in teachers hired to do exactly that in a world where we struggle in certain course areas to find teachers. But can it be done? Yes. Is it a wonderful model? Yes. And it would work in certain areas, but it would be problematic in other areas of the curriculum. Am I correct, Ms. Swanger? Ms. Robinson?
Yes, sir.
Correct?
Okay. No further. I just heard that, and it seemed like, well, that's a simple solution, but oftentimes, some simple solutions are much more complex. Thank you for enlightening me, and I assume we're still being streamed, I don't know, but if so, I'm sure people in the community may have had the same question. But it's no simple answer, although it would be a...
But it's a very good question, and it's very logical to think in that manner. Again, it's just, it just exemplifies the difference in the levels of schooling.
Thank you.
I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some more?
Seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Want to stay? Thank you very much. I appreciate all your hard work.